Good morning. Call to order the June 18, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 21 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item?
Okay. For your consent matters, you do have an addendum and also items 1 through 80. And for your addendum, it's a resolution honoring Cheryl Renee Kraft on the occasion of her retirement from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. You also will present a resolution at 9:30 when you take up your presentations. I do have a title correction on item 55. The agreement between the County of Sacramento and the City of Rancho Cordova for installation of street lighting with Folsom Boulevard Streetscape Enhancements Project Phase 5. The contract number is corrected to 52465. And then for item 69, we need to continue this to June 16, so you're not introducing this ordinance, you're continuing this ordinance. Amending Chapter 6.2 Title VI of the Sacramento County Code relating to solid waste management. And then I also need a motion to drop item 76. It's a resolution congratulating Joe Marcos on the occasion of his 100th birthday. So if we could take a motion for items 69 and 76, I'll take that right now.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes the clerk's notes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we will have the newly added presentation after the first presentation, so it'll be the second.
Okay.
Mr. Serna? Yep. Well, that's good.
All right. Next item? Or is there any questions, comments? Yes?
I'd like to record to reflect that I'm recusing myself from item 34 to a potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Any others? Ms. Serna?
Yeah, I had just a comment on item 60.
Item number 60 is the I-5 Metro Air Parkway Interchange Project, a ward of bid to security paving company.
So again, it should be no surprise to those involved with this project that at any opportunity I have to thank all of our folks from DOT and economic development and our CEO's office in helping expedite this project and getting us to this point. We're about to award the bid for the I-5 Metro Park Interchange. It's a long time coming. This is some infrastructure that will, I think, really ignite very strong interest in that park. And as we all know, it's, for a variety of reasons, languished over the years, but with the developments, that recent development and operation of the Amazon Distribution Center out there and then some other subsequent property acquisitions, I think we're well on our way to making that a very successful component part of Sacramento County's economic development portfolio. So again, thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay.
Oh, wait, I can't.
Yeah, we have a motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items 34.
Okay. With that, I would like to call Lisa Travis to the podium, please. Most of you don't know this, but what we just did included bringing on our newest county council. And I just wanted to say what a pleasure it has been working with you, how much, you know, we're all looking forward to working with you. It was one of the easiest decisions and fastest we've ever made as a body. And, you know, it's, I think that you're at the right place at the right time for the County of Sacramento, so if you'd like to say anything.
Thank you, Chair Kennedy and the rest of the board. I really appreciate you appointing me to this position. I look forward to continuing to work with you all, just in a different role. I also look forward to working with the county exec and his management team, looking forward to the new opportunities that we have. Would also like to thank my friend and colleague Tracy Lee for stepping in the last six months and doing a fabulous job as interim county council.
Okay. So the first thing you have to learn is don't steal my thunder.
Well, I'm sure you'll be doing a much better job and more thorough job in it, so I won't.
Thank you very much.
But thank you. Other than that, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
With that, I would like to thank Tracy Lee for the fantastic job that you've done. I have found you not to be an interim county council, but a county council. And you've been a true pleasure to work with. Susan and I got to work with you probably more than we wanted to through the mediation process that we all know about for ongoing litigation, but your counsel was invaluable, your energy, your straightforwardness. You know, if we could have two county councils, you'd be, you know, my pick. So, anybody? Don?
Yeah. I would just echo what Chair Kennedy said, certainly first to congratulate Lisa on her appointment and then also to thank Tracy for her work. And I know that obviously she's been in the county council's office for a number of years and worked, you know, largely in the family law arena. But I know that over the past six months, I've had the opportunity on things big and small to work with her, and she's learned a lot about, as I have from her, from a legal standpoint, but, you know, issues that I'm sure would not have come to her attention had she not had the good fortune of serving the capacity she served in. But I want to thank you, Tracy. I know you've worked late evenings here, again, a couple times, met you in the garage, going out at, you know, 7:30, 8 o'clock in the evening. And so I know you've put the hours in and have certainly been a great asset to this board during the interim period. And the fact that you're going to continue to serve with the office and work with Lisa and the rest of the colleagues there is a great thing. So, thanks again.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I too will add on and offer my sincerest thanks to Tracy for her job well done. Just one question, when are you going to write your book on the finer points of the Brown Act? Because you've been, you've been very attentive and diligent on that particular angle of what we do here at the board. And it hasn't gone unappreciated. I think even though at times we may have had friendly differences of opinion about interpretation of certain things, I think you've been very, very steadfast in your counsel to this board about our open meeting protocols. And so that's been something that I've certainly noticed, I think the rest of us have. And I wanted to thank you in particular for that, that part of what you've been doing for the last several months. And I also want to thank and congratulate Lisa Travis. And I couldn't be more proud. Many people know me as a Northern Californian ambassador for Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. My dear alumna, I'm an alumnus of that university, as is Lisa, so I'll just end with go Mustangs.
I only got one year at Cal Poly, and I'm at Hornet now, so.
Susan Peters?
Thank you. I want to first congratulate Lisa. I'm looking forward to working with you. Tracy sings your praises, and I, and you have done so well on the, in the other boards that we see you on, and we're looking forward to working with you. And Tracy, it's been a great six months with a lot of positive interaction. And little known fact, you probably don't know that Tracy and I got kicked out of the quiet car on the train.
They did.
During the mediation. We were chatting in a place we weren't supposed to chat. So I have appreciated all the time with you, and you're available anytime of day or night, and it was, it was invaluable. So I wish you the best going back to your old boring job.
Supervisor Frost?
I just want to echo what everyone else said. I really appreciate Tracy, your being available and answering all of our questions and supporting my office and your ability to work very well with all of these personalities that you, you have taken on a lot and very quickly. And we have appreciated you helping us maneuver through many important decisions. And Lisa, I'm looking forward to also working with you. And I agree with Supervisor Kennedy, I think that was the fastest decision I ever saw made between the five of us. So it was a unanimous, we were all very excited to have your application and to appoint you. So I'm looking forward to working with you as well. Thank you.
Okay. With that, next item, please.
Did you? Yeah. Do you mind if I say something really quick?
Leave?
No.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to say thank you.
That's not what she intended, I think.
I've got to go. I just wanted to say thank you and super humbled by this experience. You have an amazing board, definitely different personalities that work very hard for your constituents, county exec's office, the quality of work that's done in this county. You all should be so proud. And I know I am. And I've learned a lot about this county that I had no idea. That's what you get when you drink out of a fire hose for six months. And I just want to give a caveat. We got kicked out of the quiet car for talking too loudly when we were really kind of whispering. The sign was.
Silence only.
No.
You don't agree?
I had a witness. Should have, should have worked on that.
At least I have my lawyer with me. He'll bail me out.
Right. I got your back. So I just wanted to say thank you for making the decision to appoint Lisa Travis. And you made the right decision for this board, for our office, you can see, represented here, and for this county at this time. It was the right decision. And Lisa's been with our office since 98. She has had varied assignments through Public Works, Juvenile Dependency, Regional SAN, and excelled at every assignment that she had. She's respected and loved by her clients, admired by her peers. She gets the job done always with confidence, skill, compassion, and kindness. She's a leader in the community, an amazing mom to two unbelievable daughters, a dedicated partner to her husband, a loving and caring daughter, a supportive friend to many, and I hear a wickedly competitive trivia champion. She's smart, savvy, and steady. She's a perfect choice for this job, for this time, and I want to thank you for making that decision.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay.
Okay. So for your next item, this is the presentation of resolution honoring Cheryl Renee Kraft on the occasion of her retirement from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department.
In the last row as usual, being unobtrusive.
So colleagues on the board, it's my honor this morning to recognize someone that we see in these chambers every time we've met for, what, the last, the last three, four years maybe? And that is Deputy Sacramento County Deputy Cheryl Renee Kraft. And I just found out, I don't know about you, but I just found out recently that she is leaving us, and she's going to the California State Assembly to serve in the Sergeant of Arms Office there. She's given this county 23 years of dedicated service. I think many of you are aware that she comes from a lineage of law enforcement. Both her nephew and her father have served in various capacities in law enforcement. And I thought it very appropriate that we take the time, even though 23 years is not that even number, it's not 30, it's not 25, it's not 20, but when it comes to guarding the security, not just of the board as the effective Sergeant of Arms here, with every open session of this board convening, but the safety of the public here in chambers and in our administration building. So I wanted to make sure that we did what I thought was appropriate, and I think you would agree, and that's to honor her with a resolution on the occasion of her retirement from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. Congratulations.
I am not a person of many words. I will say that first, but I would like to thank the board. Thank you for letting me serve you. Thank you for letting me help assist you over these years. And thank you to the staff of the county. You guys have been amazing. It's been a pleasure to work in this capacity. For the Sheriff's Department that I've worked for for 23 years, it's been a great experience, and I've really enjoyed it. And yes, I come from a family of law enforcement, so it's been a really proud thing for me to be able to carry that on. So, thank you.
Good morning supervisors. And Supervisor Serna, thank you very much for the recognition. Cheryl, congratulations on 23 years of committed service. And your professionalism and your attention to detail will be sorely missed, but congratulations on that much well kind of hand.
Yes. Thank you.
I'd be a little crazier at the Capitol, though. If you worked some.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, you don't want to hear from me. I just want to say that she is going to be sorely missed. She's an amazing part of our dignitary team, probably the lead of, and teaching me how to do this. So she's going to be missed here, she's going to be missed at the Sheriff's Department. She's an amazing person and an amazing employee, and I'm very happy that she's going where she wants to go. But we're going to miss her. So, congratulations.
Oh, Cheryl, don't, don't go away yet. I just wanted to thank you. Within a week of being elected in 2016 and being installed, I came to have a need for the assistance of someone from our Sheriff's Department to kind of help me out in some of my meetings. And Cheryl was there. You have been so professional and so kind, and not only in, in keeping us safe and watching out for us, but also just explaining to me what, about your work and what you do so that I better understand some of the things that go on behind the scenes. And I think you are so good at what you do, and I have so appreciated you being there to help my office at times. And so I want to wish you all the best in your future at the state capitol.
Supervisor Tolle?
Cheryl, I want to just offer certainly a big thank you to you. And I know that over the years, for the chance to certainly work with your father when he was with the Sheriff's Department, obviously his work, you know, with the state at Cal Expo. But you've been a real pleasure to work with. I know that probably been a little frustrating work with me. I tend to shun the security detail, not because I don't respect what they do, but nonetheless, they, many major events, and Cheryl was always good and followed up, had my cellphone, and I could call her if I needed to. Usually it was because I was running late. I was this morning, probably could have used Escort this morning getting here, but they were probably following me this morning getting here, so I was running late. But I, but I know I've had a tendency oftentimes to linger here in the chambers, and I think your assignment is obviously until the board clears the chambers, you're supposed to be on duty. And so I'm sure you had to log a few extra hours while I visited with folks, following the meetings and so forth. But I say it with all seriousness, because I know, again, you take your, your assignment very seriously, and obviously, public protection and public safety, and certainly it's not just for board members and staff, but it's for all the folks who participate in our, in our public meetings, which we're doing to Public's Business. And again, I've seen you out and about in the community and certainly with your colleagues. And I very much appreciate it, certainly your attention to detail and, and your good work, but certainly your, your pleasant demeanor and obviously, you may not say a lot of words, but I know you're very engaged in the community, and you care very deeply about the people who you look out for, and I thank you for that. I want to wish you well, obviously, in your new assignment. You may find it a little, a little more challenging over there, but nonetheless, you know, for, for what you have taken on the assignment, and I'm sure you'll be very capable in that. And so I wish you well, and, and thanks for all the good work over the years. Appreciate it.
Sorry. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. We've already said our goodbyes earlier, but I wanted to thank you in public again for your work for us for the last several years. You're highly professional and an absolutely great representative of the Sheriff's Department. You are the picture of what our deputies are, that we don't often get to see. I know you're going to do well at the legislature, their gain, our loss, but I really do wish you the best, and I hope we bump into each other again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Okay. I'm going to mix things up just a little bit because we have a guest here who's been patiently waiting for us to do our own business. So we'll take number 82 next.
Item 82 is the invitation to the Board of Supervisors to attend the 2019 California State Fair.
Mr. Pickering.
Welcome back. Thank you. Rick Pickering, CEO of Cal Expo and your California State Fair, or I should say our California State Fair. The State Fair this year will be up and running from July 12 through July 28, so 17 days of excitement. So Honorable Chair Kennedy, distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors, talented members of the executive staff and team. Since 1854, California State Fair has been seeking to showcase the best that the state of California has to offer. Last year, 57 of California's 58 counties had residents that competed in programs at California State Fair. Pretty, pretty darn excited.
What was the one?
That's the question we get everywhere we go, and it starts with the letter A, and it's Alpine County.
Alpine, because there's only 1,200 people.
We've, we've, yes. We've worked very hard to get Alpine County. One of these years, we'll get them back out there. But most important to us is our home county, which is Sacramento County, and the things that take place within the county. We also want to express our appreciation for the outstanding positive working relationship from the various county departments and working with us at a state agency that controls roughly 800 acres of, of land within the county. And we had two outstanding, three outstanding representatives of the Sheriff's Department today, and we've continued to expand the relationship and working with the County Sheriff's Department in inner jurisdictional matters. So thank you for that and your support. New energy at this year's State Fair. We've added the term food festival. If we could have the overhead projection onto the screens? Thank you very much. California State Fair and Food Festival. We've been the largest food festival for decades in the Sacramento region, if not Northern California. So this year, we thought, let's add that concept in there with more than 90 food booths showcasing the best wine, cheese, olive oil, et cetera, the state of California craft beer, which is continuing to grow. It made sense just to add that tag on there, California State Fair and Food Festival. But it's the California State Fair, thank you for putting the glasses on. Appreciate that.
I can't see you anymore.
But it's also the California State Fair and Drone Light Show. So we're replacing our Friday, Saturday, Sunday night fireworks shows with drone light shows, so it will be lights in the sky above Cal Expo. We're also creating the first of its kind esports, electronic gaming tournament, but we're also tying that into a job fair, the different jobs that are available throughout the state of California tied to esports and esports gaming. We're going back this year and doing the second annual state of California youth mariachi competitions. Last year, we were able to bring in youth mariachi teams from El Centro, San Diego, the Central Valley, Salinas, from the Sacramento region as well. So we're doing that again this year. It's growing, it's expanding, and Mariachi Vargas will be educating some of these young mariachi players. If you don't know who Vargas is, I encourage you to look them up because they are the most successful, the best thought of mariachi group in the world. So it's great to have them here at the California State Fair. But we also have a number of the traditions, from the animals to the State Fair farm, to the variety of food. And then typically, when we go out and talk in the audiences, people say, discount tickets. Where do we get our discount tickets? So you can visit the California State Fair Cal Expo website. But we also have a food drive on Mondays. So if you bring three canned food items before 3 o'clock, you get free admission. We have children that are free on Tuesdays. We have a senior promotion day. We have recognition of first responders and military personnel on Thursdays. So there's great opportunities for people not only to get discount tickets, but actually get free admission. The magazine, and I know each of you have a copy of last year's magazine, this year's magazine will be coming out in the next couple of weeks, but as the California State Fair, we're called upon to serve as a benchmark for consumers in California. So this year, we had close to 3,000 commercial wine products entered into our competition. The winners are now posted on our website. They'll go into our annual State Fair magazine here in a couple of weeks. But if people are traveling throughout the state of California and they want to find out who the best of the best, who the double gold medal winners are, it's all on the website, and it's searchable geographical as well. And our website is in nine different foreign languages now. We continue to do a number of things. We've recently been fully certified, 88 certification for both of our websites. So public access to information, to maps, moving around the property. We had more than 500 event days this last year. Many weekends, we have multiple events take place, and we're also now the fallback seat of government for the state capitol in an emergency. So half of everything at the capitol would move to Cal Expo if the capitol were evacuated. So being a regional asset in the community is important to us, and we hope to see everybody in this room out at your California State Fair during the cool month of July, from the 12th to the 28th. So thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, Rick. Congratulations and good luck. It looks like a great, it's going to be a great fair.
And cool.
I, the, the light, the drone light show looks particularly interesting.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
On the, the drone show, I mean, I always look forward to the end of the fireworks because it tells me what time it is to go to bed, right? Because I can hear it from my house. Will they, will there be any noise associated with the drone show, or is it just the, the light?
It's certainly completely different than the percussion or concussions of fireworks, but there will be amplified sound throughout the fairgrounds on our public address system, so it will be choreographed to music. It will be at the same time that the fireworks shows traditionally will. So many people, when the show ends, go, oh, it must be time to go home. But we encourage it, grab something cold and something sweet on the way out the door after the show.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Supervisor Serna?
So Rick, thanks for being here yet again. I think this is, what, eight years in a row, I guess, for me that I've seen you here, and appreciate every time you have an opportunity to share with us and the public what's in store for the upcoming State Fair. But I would, I do have a very serious question. On page 60 of the magazine, there's a photo of your esteemed wine judges. How does one apply to be a wine judge?
Well, actually, for each of the five of you, we, we do bring on board celebrity wine judges, VIP wine judges, and in some cases, they make a small donation that goes to our youth scholarship funds. This year, we'll be awarding another 25 scholarships to high school seniors throughout the state of California, some of which are actually pursuing careers in agriculture and attending some of our ag tech schools.
Good. I like the way you roll.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Good luck. All right. Guess I've delayed it long enough.
I think we want to drop this item.
Yes.
Can we continue it?
Right. Next item, please.
Item 81 is the presentation of resolution recognizing Michael J. Penrose upon the occasion of his retirement after 28 years of county service.
So, in all seriousness, we say this often when we have staff leave, and that's that we joke that we're going to continue it. We joke we're not going to accept it, we're not going to vote yes. And I have to tell you from the heart that this one really is, falls in that category, or I wish it could. I'm not going to be long because I have a strong feeling that I have four colleagues who want to chime in on this one. But I will say, without reading wherethes and all, I will tell you that, you know, Mike is one of those public servants that is so very rare. I, I've never really heard the guy say no. And in that job, that's a very difficult thing. I found Mike to be, in the five years that I've known him, to be really one of the best problem solvers that I've ever had the chance to work with. I'll, I'll give you an example, and every one up here has dozens of these Mike Penrose examples, but Habitat for Humanity wanted to build five homes in District 2 in an area that nobody would build homes in for decades. And they came across some county policies that were making it a little bit difficult. So I said, okay, you know, I want to get this thing fixed. This is too important for the district and the county and Habitat and the, the This is too important for the district and the county and Habitat and the families that are going to live in those homes. So I just went right to the source, and I went right to Mike Penrose. I made an appointment for him and Habitat to get together at 2:00 in the afternoon. At 2:00 in the afternoon, I came out to the lobby to bring them back into my office where I was going to iron this thing out. I opened the door, and Mike Penrose looks up. He's got the plans already rolled out in the lobby of the board chambers, the board offices. Looks up, waves me on, and says, taken care of. That's a Mike Penrose story. And again, we all have dozens of those. Your dedication to doing the right thing, your dedication to this county, and your ability to think not just outside the box, but you get rid of the box at times, has been inspirational, and it's been a true service to the people of, I can say, District 2 and all of the other districts in Sacramento County. So with that, I'm going to have you take the podium, and I'm sure my colleagues will have something to say as well. So congratulations.
So am I to stand or speak?
The floor is yours.
Okay. So first of all, I'm just really honored to be acknowledged today and get this recognition from everybody. My time serving at the county, I've absolutely loved the whole time that I've been here. I came in '91, and I'm super grateful for all the opportunities that were given to me as I came along. Just one opportunity after the next that's given me the chance to serve in a greater capacity in a whole bunch of different areas that, for me, are interesting. They may not be for everybody because I'm an engineer, right? And most recently, having the privilege of being able to work with the new Public Works Agency and that coming together and being brought along by the county executive and given the opportunity to do that has just been, for me, over the top. Been super grateful for the opportunity to do that. And it's been a pleasure working with your board. I know we do different issues at different times and stuff, but it really has been an honor to do that. I have a great respect for, you know, the issues that you bring forward and the importance to those, to your constituents and the citizens of Sacramento County, and me being able to be a part of that. The example that you talked about just a minute ago was, you know, a chance to serve and get something done that was important to everybody. So that's probably all I have to say. Excited about retirement, also sort of a little bit mixed about leaving. I've had a chance to work with wonderful people, you know, the folks that I've called out now, as well as all sorts of staff as I've been here. And leaving those folks is going to be a little bit of a challenge, but I think I'll still be engaged one way or another. And then my wife is here today. She's come down to Rose, she's back there, and she and I've got, it kind of says it in this resolution, but we do have a lot of plans that we're going to engage in immediately as soon as.
Do they involve motorcycles and the Grateful Dead?
They do. Fishing, and hiking, and paddle boarding, and all kinds of stuff. So we've got the next six months of a whole bunch of neat things we want to do. So anyways, thanks a lot for letting me say something.
Now you can just stand there and listen to us.
Okay, thanks.
So I'll start off. So I'm really delighted that Chair Kennedy made the presentation the way he did and acknowledged you as a problem solver. I think that's probably the most apropos label we could, you know, associate with you. I've had a chance to work with you now for a little over two terms, and, you know, I have a fairly unique district in that I don't have a lot of municipal service needs compared to some others on this board, just by nature, the overlap with the city of Sacramento. But in those small areas where I have had a lot of focus on quality of life issues that fall within the realm of transportation, infrastructure, public works, you've been extraordinarily responsive, and you've been that problem solver when I needed you to be and when our constituents, and I say ours, even though that word is usually most associated with folks that are elected, I think it's just as relevant to civil servants in their own right. And so I think you've treated them just as we would our constituents, and so I want to thank you for that. I do want to convey that I've heard from a handful of private sector interests, I know there are some in the audience today, and they have a tremendous amount of respect for you as well. I think they would agree that, from their perspective, whether they are land developers, home builders, those that we partner with in the private sector, that you've been someone that they really welcome in terms of, you know, the work that you do. That's not always the case, we know that. Sometimes it can be a very confrontational relationship between development interests and public works departments and planning departments. But I think they've really seen you as a welcome partner to do what needs to get done for the benefit of the residents of Sacramento County, for the benefit of our infrastructure network. And so that's the legacy I think you should be very proud of, and we hope that in your retirement, you won't travel too far away. I suspect not, and it must be nice, from your perspective, to be able to look around this county over the course of your career and really note the difference that you've made, because you've made a great difference, Mike, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Hi, Mike. I just wanted to thank you for all the times you said, oh, how can we make this work? You're just that kind of person, and you are so respected by so many of our business and development community, and you've helped us solve so many problems, and I'm so sorry to see you go. I know you have to live, you know, your life, and I'm happy for you. I hope you really enjoy your retirement. But we will miss you. You'll be a hard act to follow, and we've appreciated your dedicated service and your positive, how can we make this work mindset, and we hope to carry that on in all the departments at the county. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thanks.
Supervisor Tolle.
Well, Mike, when I got your notice, as I called you that very day, I said I was glad I was sitting down when I was reading it, because I, you know, obviously, everyone approaches retirement from a indifferent angle, but I, you know, it was quite unexpected. You know, obviously, you contemplated it, you and your wife, and you've explained that and had made a decision, and I certainly very supportive of that decision. But I would just recount for a moment. I've had the good fortune of working with you throughout your entire career with the county and certainly throughout my career, both as an assistant to my predecessor, but certainly as a supervisor over the nearly past 25 years. And as my colleagues have said, obviously, you've been noted for the ability to tackle challenging issues and challenging problems. And I think I recall probably most vividly, you know, when I got a chance to see you at work and certainly in these chambers when they were full of people, and we were talking about widening the Wadavon Bridge. And you were working very closely, obviously, with Supervisor Merrill Johnson at the time, but because that connected to the area of District 5. We had neighborhoods in the La Riviera area and certainly the Rosemont area at the time, and spent a lot of hours, and I know you devoted a tremendous amount of time and effort, and I think your skill set was certainly perfected during that time because you had the opportunity to get plenty of feedback, to process that, and then come in these chambers on multiple times and attempt to bring forward the engineered public works project with all the various amenities and with all the, you know, community concerns expressed. And obviously, that's, you know, well in the rearview mirror now, but throughout the years, again, as Supervisor Serna said, that, you know, each of the districts is unique. I'm sure I've challenged your ability to think outside the box at times with my district and some of the issues that have presented themselves. But I know even as of the last few days, you've been a party to some of the conversations and attempting to work through things that have had a long tail to them, but nonetheless, where your skill set and certainly your ability to craft and to figure out in a very logical sense, but certainly with empathy for the situation at hand to, you know, to help, you know, this county and its daily work. And I've been so appreciative of that. Certainly, I know at times, again, with some of the challenging issues, it's been a little tense, and I'm sure you've gone back, scratched your head, and thought, my God, got to deal with that supervisor from the 5th district again. Nonetheless, I think always with good intent and certainly with, you know, the spirit of trying to figure things out and to do it in a way that protects public interest and certainly the, you know, the public trust, but in a way that obviously, if everything was in a book and, you know, and you just went to Section A in the book and it told you how to do it, that would be easy, but that's not how it is. And in fact, you can probably write your own book about how you get to certain solution sets. And again, a credit certainly to your profession, to yourself, but to this county, and I would just say that, again, I think you've been a tremendous role model, and I know there are colleagues in the audience here today, folks that I think you've had a chance to mentor, and if nothing else, through your example, have provided tremendous leadership, Mike. And I'm very appreciative of that, and I thank you on behalf of certainly the people that I'm given to represent, all the people of this county, and certainly those from District 5. And I want to wish you and your wife many blessings in the, you know, in the days and years to come. I think you'll find enjoyment in many different things, as you do now, but retirement will give you the opportunity to pick and choose those things that you and your wife and your family wants to do. And so with that, you know, many blessings to you and Godspeed, and we'll see you from time to time, I'm sure. So thanks again, Mike, for all your good work.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you, Mike. As representing District 3, I have the greatest need for transportation, all kinds of attention to transportation, and I've always, always appreciated how much extra time you gave me, and I, as I mentioned to you yesterday, I think you taught me everything I know about transportation, probably to the fear of whoever's going to follow you. And, you know, you were kidding about your liking things that other people might not be interested in, and I've always appreciated that I could say, listen, I'm the wife of an engineer and the daughter of an engineer, so I get you. So I was able to tease you, and you've always been very thoughtful, you're very bright and respectful, and the most important thing, practical, in a time when things can get so easily complicated. You are the guy who could undo the puzzle. I know you have a great deal of respect in the building industry and anyone who has anything to do with infrastructure now, and they were all horrified when you said you were going to retire, but we'll figure it out. And I wish you the best. And Rose, I just want to say, take care of him, he's a jewel, okay? Wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. That's it. I'm going to take it out. I think. I think the. In the back. It's doing well. Whoop. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Devin. You hold the spot. Devin. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Thanks. Yeah. We're. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, thanks. Hey, man, that was you. Good. See you. Now get back to work, Mike.
Title 6, relating to host family permit fees. You're waiving full reading and continuing to July 16, 2019, for adoption.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and board members. My name is Marie Woodin. I'm the Director for the Environmental Management Department. I want to thank you for this opportunity to present to you a new bill, AB 2524, that addresses catering operations and host facilities. This new bill became effective in January, and our department is requesting an ordinance change to add the definition for host facilities and two new fee categories to our department's fee schedule. To give you a little bit of background, why this bill became into statute is breweries in the past were not built with commercial kitchens, but they quickly realized they wanted to have food available for their customers. These food sales were sometimes called pop-ups. They would bring in a guest chef or a caterer, but the pop-ups were not addressed in the state retail food code, and therefore, we had no pathway to permit them. With this new bill, pop-ups will now be a caterer that can prepare and sell food directly to customers. So what exactly has changed? There are two new definitions. Catering operation and a host facility were added to the California Retail Food Code. New sections were added to set up the framework for permitting the catering operation to prepare food, sell food directly to a host facility. These new code sections include permitting and operational requirements for this type of food sale activity. So what does the law now allow? For breweries, wineries, and bars, they can apply for a permit as a host facility. Once permitted, food businesses can invite and prepare to sell food at a brewery or winery as a catering operation or a pop-up. Host facility requirements, a host facility must obtain a permit from our department. They also must do the following. They have to have a restroom with handwashing sink available, refuse, storage, and collection, approved area for liquid waste disposal, hot and cold water, designated area for catering operation that complies with zoning and fire codes, so they can't block entrances and exits, they can't set up on a sidewalk. Food sales by a caterer are limited to four hours in any 12-hour period. The catering operation requirements, they must operate from a permanent food facility or commercial kitchen. Prior to conducting food service at the host facility, the catering operation must submit to our department a standing operation procedure that includes the list of foods being served and methods for maintaining food safety and sanitation. The catering operation must maintain records for off-site food sales for 90 days. Records include location, date, off-site service activity, customer contact information, temperature logs, and menu.
Rick, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
The second bullet, is that every time they cater, they have to get a separate permit?
I think if it's going to be a routine, they're going to go to one facility, we'll accept that standing operation procedure. We're not every time, but just, you know, common sense wise, if they're going to change new location, different types of food, then maybe they would submit in there for an SOP.
Okay.
Okay, regarding fees.
What's the turnaround on getting a permit? How long does it take?
Kelly? I'm going to bring up Kelly McCoy, our deputy chief.
Morning. It's over the counter, so it's a quick transaction, yeah.
I thought it was fast, but I wanted to make sure I didn't give you false information. Okay. Existing fees, so there's no change to catering permits. We already have these existing in our ordinance. There's a low-risk catering permit fee for $268 a year, and low risk means that the caterer is usually reheating cooked foods like hot dogs, tamales, or cooked corn. High risk is $391 a year. That means the caterer is taking raw foods, usually raw meats, beef, poultry, fish, and they're changing it to its cooked state. A catering permit is not needed if already permitted as a restaurant or other food preparation facility. The new proposed fees, we're calling them host facility. Category A, it means that they already have a health permit with our department, such as a bar, we're just going to be charging a $73 application fee. And then Category B, no current permit with us, such as a brewery, it's an annual fee of $365. That includes the inspection.
Okay, so let's say that a brewery wants to cook their own food at their site, then they have to apply for both of these fees?
If they don't have a kitchen and they want to be a host facility, they can apply to be a host facility. For instance, if they don't have a health permit with us, it's a bar that doesn't have any kitchen facilities, they want to be host. They would just, oh, I'm sorry, they already have a current permit fee with us. They would, as a bar, they would apply for $73, and then they can have a caterer to come in as the pop-up to set up, cook the food there, and then serve the customers. So that's the relation with host.
But what if they're doing it themselves?
They're doing, well, usually if they're doing it themselves, they've got commercial kitchen there, so they would already be permitted with us. I guess they could still have a pop-up chef come in, but anyway.
Or maybe they have two businesses and one's a pop-up.
Right, right.
Right.
Or they're, I'm speaking from experience here.
Okay.
I'm trying not to name names.
Oh, okay.
Get anybody in trouble. You know, let's say that the owners of a brewery want to, you know, a married couple ownership want to, and one is doing the cooking there and one's running the brewery, I mean...
So as long as they have the commercial kitchen... So, as long as they have the commercial kitchen there and they're, they'd have to be permitted with us if they're going to cook themselves on-site, they need a permit with us. If they already have their permit, but let's say they still want a guest chef to come in, they can do that. They would just fill out this seventy-three dollar application fee to have somebody else come in if they're just a sole caterer and they're not another restaurant. I know it's kind of confusing, but I want to help it clarified a little bit.
Okay.
And we can answer more questions. The fee comparison, when we actually started looking at this, this is a new bill, so these are the counties that did have, they already had taken it to their board. We feel our fees are reasonable, we're not char, what we found out is they're charging a plan check fee. I don't know why we decided not to do that because most of these facilities have already been through plan check, they already have a mop sink, hand sink. So, we decided we're not going to charge them the plan check fee, we're just going to charge the seventy-three dollars application fee or three hundred and sixty-five dollar fee. Okay? On April the fourth, we held a workshop, we invited breweries, wineries and caterers. We had a lot of positive feedback, we had a lot of caterers show up, barbecue, you name it, they came to the workshop, they were all excited. We also did outreach to the Sacramento Environmental Commission and received a letter of support. Any further questions?
Any questions? Nope. I do have a card from a public speaker, Ben Roberts.
Good morning, everyone. To answer your question about a brewery setting up and selling their food as themselves, they would have to have a commissary in which they prepped all that food. So, I think if I'm right or wrong, Kelly can correct me, they can do that, but they just have to have a commercial kitchen in which they've prepared all of that food. I myself support this bill one hundred percent. Thank you, Phil, for all of your help that you've done. Thank you all for listening. I think this will help people youthful in their career, wanting to branch out, start their own businesses. I have a pizzeria that opens in six minutes now. I started this business five years ago as a caterer. Just opened my pizzeria about six weeks ago, so it helps. It gets, it gets people off the ground, for sure. It gets their voice out, it gets their product out, it shows, it lets you express yourself as an artist. That's pretty much it.
So, it opens in six minutes, where is it?
It's on, it's the Old Yellow Bill, it's on fourteen, twenty-five, fourteen Street End, so I got to hop on a jump scooter or bike and get there in six minutes. I'm like checking my camera at my house to make sure like my wife has left the house to get there, to like unlock the door, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming on such an important day.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be huge for Sacramento, for sure. Getting people to sell food legitimately, getting the, like, more clarity in the code, I think is important because when we initially had our meeting, it was like, "Well, what are you doing wrong? I don't know what I'm doing wrong. What's he doing wrong? I don't know what he's doing wrong." Okay, well, let's figure out how we can make it right and I think this is huge.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's the name of your pizzeria?
It's called Pizza Supreme Beans Slices and Squares. So, we do like New York-style pizza and then we also do like a square, it's kind of a play on a Detroit-style like deep dish pizza as well, so you guys all have to come check it out.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, that's the last card I have, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Stern, a second by Supervisor Natoli, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, next item.
Okay, so for item eighty-four, I do need a motion to drop this item. This is the Twin Rivers Transit Oriented Development and Light Real Station Project.
Second.
Mr. Chair, maybe just, since we carried this item for a few agendas and I think there was good news that came on this, so it might be worthwhile to note why it was being dropped. I know we got a brief memo late yesterday, so I just think it's important for those that may be watching to know why we're dropping it. The project's still going forward, but there's some funding that's been inserted, as I understand.
So, a new grant has been received by the agency and what they're going to do is bring this item back after the cost analysis sometime in the fall. But it's good news, we got more money than we anticipated.
It'll have a celebratory tone to it.
Yes, very good. Okay, good, thanks. Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item eighty-five is the approval of the Five-Year Transportation Improvement Program Guide two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four.
I'm Dan Schuman with the Department of Transportation and I'm pleased to be here this morning to present what would be Mike Penrose's last TIPG hearing and unfortunately he's not here just yet to join us, but hopefully he'll join us.
Goofing off already, huh?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mentioned that just because back, Mike was really a big part, especially in his early days with the Department of Transportation, of starting up the processes, of even some of the documents that have become now what we call the TIPG and he's overseen the evolution of that thing as he's, as he's advanced through his career with the Department of Transportation. So, I'd like to really thank Mike for his guidance and his leadership on that. So, this is our, our annual update, the years we're spanning, start with fiscal year nineteen twenty, go through year twenty-three, twenty-four. We've provided each of you with a, with a hard copy of the document. We also have the electronic forms on the Board Agenda webpage as well as on the Department of Transportation's website. We will be, as we have in prior years, what we present to you today is the final draft version of the document and then we ask for your approval along with any revisions or changes that we might discuss today and then we go back and publish and distribute the final, the final TIPG document. So, to provide just a brief overview, the Transportation Improvement Program Guide details the capital improvement projects as well as the maintenance and operations programs that are recommended for implementation during fiscal year nineteen twenty as well as future years. The TIP describes the various revenue sources that the county utilizes for transportation projects as well as ongoing maintenance programs and the various processes that we go through to select and prioritize capital projects and maintenance projects. With your Board's approval of the TIPG, the funding allocations to specific projects will be conceptually approved. It authorizes the Department of Transportation to go out and pursue available project funding opportunities. It approves priorities and funding allocations for pavement rehab and overlay projects and it also adopts the multi-year capital improvement plans for both Measure A and for the countywide transportation development fee to, to meet the statutory requirements of those programs. I have a couple of pie charts that summarize the funding sources that, that are represented in the, in the TIPG document. This first one is for capital improvement projects. This is actually covering the five years of the, of the TIPG, so it involves the delivery of sixty-two projects totaling just under four hundred million dollars. The major sources that go into these projects include the federal funds, which include the RSTP and CMAC funds that are allocated as part of SECOG's regional funding programs. Also, the Highway Bridge Program and the Highway Safety Improvement Program, which we apply for and receive grants directly from the state. The two major local sources, of course, are the Measure A sales tax and the countywide development fee. And I just wanted to comment on the light blue slice of pie called "other." That includes a few of the, of the more one-time sources that we'll get from time to time, but a big part of that is unidentified funding. So, there are a number of projects listed in the TIP that, that we are still in the process of securing full funding for their construction, so we've kind of represented that unfunded portion there in, in that section of the chart. This chart is for maintenance and operations funding sources. This is a little different than the first one in that it depicts just one, one budget year, which is pretty much characteristic of the fact that most of our maintenance funding is, is used for ongoing annual programs. So, this is for the, the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, total expected expenditure of a little over ninety million dollars. The bulk of the funding comes, of course, from our gas tax sources, the basic gas tax being identified in that road fund portion and then the new gas taxes and fees from Senate Bill One make up the bulk along with the Measure A allocation for, for maintenance. I'm going to talk about a few of the project highlights, but first I just wanted to put up a slide showing some of the projects that were completed over this past fiscal year. We had several key overlay projects completed. We had a couple of bridge rehab and replacements, one, the rehabilitation of Jaboom Street Bridge and the construction of a bridge replacement on North Channel Dry Creek on Realinda Boulevard. We also completed the second phase of the Hazel Avenue Corridor Project. This segment was from Currid Downs to Sunset and the third and the final phase of that project will be underway next fiscal year, probably starting next spring. Just to go over a few of the project highlights in the TIPs, I'll just kind of talk about these by project category or project type. The first set is what we call major corridor improvements. This involves the county's arterial and thoroughfare corridors. It includes projects to widen the road, to add traffic lanes for, to relieve congestion, add traffic capacity, also intersection upgrades as well as complete street features, including bike, PED, ADA accessibility improvements, transit access improvements, as well as landscaping and streetscape. The total estimated expenditure over the five-year timeframe of the TIP is about two hundred and thirty-five million dollars and I've listed a few of the projects that are underway in the TIP. There's one that isn't listed that I just wanted to take note of because we, your Board approved the award of a contract this morning to the Interstate Five at Metro Air Parkway Interchange, so we're looking forward to that project starting construction this summer. The bicycle pedestrian ADA improvements include construction of new sidewalks, new bike lanes, intersection upgrades for ADA accessibility, curb ramps, traffic signal upgrades for, for ADA access, including audible signals and the like. Safe House to School projects, which are a variety of improvements intended to improve walking and bike access to, to elementary and middle schools. The total estimated expenditure in the TIPG is forty-five million dollars and there's eight of the projects that are currently in development there. The Auburn and the Thomas Edison School Safe House, as well as the power and road sidewalk projects will be going under construction this fiscal year. This category, corridor enhancement projects, also involves the county's arterial and thoroughfare corridors. Generally, these are the fully built-out corridors that have been fully improved to their general planned lane configuration, so they're not focused on adding lane capacity, more focused on providing complete street features, so more pedestrian and bicycle facilities, ADA upgrades, as well as landscape, streetscape enhancements throughout the corridors. The total expect expenditure currently shown in the TIP is thirty million dollars. We have projects underway on the Arden Way, Folsom, Greenback, Watt Avenue corridors, the Old Florentown Streetscape Project, second phase and final phase of that has been awarded and will be starting construction shortly. And then one other one that isn't listed here that was for your Board in the consent calendar for approval to advertise is the third and final phase of the Fair Oaks Boulevard Streetscape Project extending between Marconi Avenue and Engel Road. The Highway Bridge Replacement Projects, we've had in process for quite a few years a number of projects, we're now finally happy to report, we actually have some of those under construction. We actually have four projects that are currently under construction or about to construction, the two bridges on Ion Road and on McKenzie Road and then we'll be starting the, the bridge on Winding Way at Chicago Creek shortly. And these projects primarily utilize federal highway bridge program funding to either replace or upgrade structurally deficient or functionally obsolete bridges. And again, there's ten active projects in the TIP, totaling about seventy-six million.
Yes. Dan, just on the, the two bulleted, the Ion Road Bridge, Buckeye and Willow Creeks, would you have some folks do some outreach? I had a call last week from the manager of the, the Folsom Gun Club, the range there and I think they're still having some difficulties. We've got that road closed for months. I know we worked with it initially. I haven't had a chance to connect, I left messages and he left messages as well, but I know we did notification, but if they're struggling, their business or people getting their, I don't know what else we can do relative to, you know, movable message signs at, you know, at different locations, whether they're coming from Amador County or down Highway sixteen again from Amador County or coming in from Sacramento, so, because there's not really no easy route to get there with what we've got shut off on that, on that southeast end of the, of the road right now, so.
Right, yeah, we'll definitely.
If you would, okay, thanks, just let me think of that. Thank you, thanks.
And finally here we, we have the road rehabilitation safety projects. This includes pavement overlays, sidewalk replacement projects. We have speed control programs, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program is under this category, as well as installing and upgrading streetlights in neighborhoods. Total expenditure in the TIP is a hundred and forty-two million dollars. We have in the works the three major overlay projects listed there that are, are being moved forward thanks to new funding from SB One as well, as well as federal sources. We have some new streetlight installations going on in the Florin area in South Sacramento. There'll be actually a second phase of improvement and we're working on delivering the, the streetlight installations in the Rosemont neighborhoods as well. And just to conclude, like we do every year, we like to highlight some of the challenges and opportunities that we see in, in the coming fiscal year and beyond. We've had considerable discussion with your Board on some of our roadway needs, specifically on pavement, including the pavement condition workshop on February twenty-sixth. And you've heard all the numbers before, we have a countywide PCI of pavement condition index of fifty, which is really at the very bottom end of the fair category. We have an unfunded backlog of seven hundred and eighty-nine million dollars in pavement needs. We have had a considerable boost to our funding thanks to Senate Bill One again, so we're currently available about thirty to thirty-five million dollars a year, but we, we really need to see fifty million dollars a year, really to just maintain status quo, just to kind of hold that PCI fifty and eighty-eight million or more a year to see an improvement in our PCI. So, we, we still have ways to go in really identifying more funding for, for that, for the pavement needs, which is really one of our highest priority needs. We also are looking at some new challenges with bicycle pedestrian and ADA access improvements. The county, the Department of Transportation has been working with the Disability Compliance Office and other county departments to update the county's ADA transition plan and this includes an update to the existing transition plan that was adopted a number of years ago for the roadway system. And of course, the bulk of this update is, is the street and sidewalk system and that will be coming to your Board for hearings in this fall, probably this October and we are fully expecting a, a significant set of, of new. we are fully expecting a significant set of needs to be met in the area of disability access. Also, starting this year, we recently received a state planning grant to update our current bicycle and pedestrian master plans, and then we will also be consolidating those into an active modes master plan. So that work will actually begin shortly and be completed through most of this fiscal year, and again, we expect a number of new construction needs to be identified by that planning process. Upcoming funding opportunities this year on the state and federal side, SECOG is engaged in funding rounds. We currently or just recently submitted applications for their 2019 regional funding round, which was actually a supplementary funding round to the 2018 round that was completed last winter, and this was a smaller amount, just kind of a supplemental funding round, but the county has turned in three applications for projects that were partially funded last year, so we're hoping to get near or full funding on those projects for kind of a second time around. SECOG will also be advancing during this fiscal year the 2020 regional funding cycle, which will be substantially larger. It'll, it's expected to have about, or in excess of $200 million available from the federal and STIP sources for transportation improvements and programs throughout the region. Other state funding opportunities coming up this year, the new grant programs created by Senate Bill One will be entering their second cycle. This includes the local partnership program that we work through the Sacramento Transportation Authority on, also the solutions for congested corridor programs, as well as the trade corridor improvement programs that will be opportunities to apply for additional funding, and will be coming back to your board as those funding processes come online to bring our recommendations for applications. On the local side, back in April, your board approved the update to the Sacramento Countywide Transportation Development Fee. Those new fees are actually going to affect next week, so those introduce some additional projects that are funded in order to address the impacts of new development. Also, there's regional, region-wide efforts going on to identify or even develop new funding sources. The STA is currently leading a public outreach campaign, and we've been working closely with the STA to talk about the county's various transportation needs as well as support that outreach effort. So that's it for my presentation. We have numerous staff in attendance to answer any questions.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, thank you, Dan, for the presentation. If I could, I don't know if, do you have the tip G in front of you? Yeah, I can go to page A3-2. This is the spreadsheet for Five-Year Transportation Improvement Program Guide, Projects in District One, and the I-5 Metro Air Parkway Interchange is listed there, both under project total cost and district cost share at nearly $28 million. And action we took earlier on consent, we accepted a bid of roughly $10 million less. So my question is, what happens to that savings? Am I thinking of it the right way?
Well, the cost that we put on the chart as well in here is the total project, so it includes all the.
Well, that was my question, because you had a column called District Cost Share, and so what's the difference?
Well, the district cost share is really there for when we have projects that have multiple locations, so we might have overlay project, where it's one project listed in the tip with multiple locations in different districts.
Let me ask the question a different way. So the total project cost is what, how much? Twenty-seven, 27 million?
Right.
Okay, so the 17 million of the estimate from the lowest responsible bidder that we acted on earlier came in at 17 and change, right, to do the work?
That's correct.
But that's a fraction of the work that they're doing? That's the whole thing?
No, that's the whole construction.
Now I'm even more confused.
Yeah, that's the contract.
How many reconcile the difference between the two numbers?
The, so the amount of the award today was for the contract cost.
Right.
There's also, in fact, the total construction cost, there's actually a 10% contingency added to that, so it puts it around 18 to 19 million dollars of a total construction cost. We also have construction support that is running about $2 million, one and a half to $2 million. And then the other part of the $27.8 million is for the design, preliminary engineering, any right-of-way acquisition, any costs for additional utility work, so it's the total, grand total of the project to deliver it as well as.
I guess it was just unclear the way the table's labeled, because you have District Cost Share, and I was expecting to see a lower number, something lower than 27 million under that column header. That gives me, that leads me to the understanding that the work that we're releasing the bid to go do now at 17 and change is for the actual construction.
Right.
There's been land acquisition, there's been design, all these other quote-unquote "soft" costs associated with the project. So I guess in the future, I would ask you to maybe consider rethinking this so I can have, we can avoid that kind of confusion. Then my second question is, I believe the engineer's estimate was actually higher than the lowest bid that we took action on by about a million and a half, 2 million?
That's correct, yeah.
So what happens in that case? Let's, you know, cross our fingers and hope that there aren't a lot of change orders and there's a slow burn, if any, through a contingency. What happens to any savings there? Does it stay? Where does it stay? Where does that savings go?
Well, the funding is out of the Community Facilities District there, so any savings realized from this project could go towards being available for future work. So for instance, we're now having discussions with Caltrans about completing an auxiliary lane on Interstate Five generally between the Highway 99 interchange and the airport.
So it has to stay with a Caltrans line item of some sort?
Well, it stays with, it stays with a Metro Air Park project, yes.
Including other transportation improvements, literally internal to the park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the aux lanes are a Metro Air Park responsibility.
And then, we have a true understanding of what we have to work with, I assume, once we have, we've completed the entire project and we have the as-built and all that?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Serna, Toly.
Thank you. Couple of different things. One being just on your introduction on the funding sources, and obviously you showed a pie chart that went through in a little better detail. I think it's important, and I think I may have mentioned this at a hearing a year or two ago, that it may not be a major source of funding, but for the last four years, including this recently passed budget, improved budget last week, we have made a general fund contribution to operations and maintenance, I believe, and that doesn't show. You talk about local or other sources, but I think in the description, so if somebody reads this, it's not a big, it's not a big amount of money, but there were decades in this county where there was very little, I think it was like $20,000 general fund, and it went to a specific contribution category. I just think it's important to call that out so that folks know, if they look at this document, that there are general fund dollars, and again, they may be meager by this year's comparison, it's only $1 million, but in years past, it's been $2 million, a year ago was 1.4 million. I think it's important to point that out, and the document may be accounted for in here, but I think your introduction ought to talk about, you know, because I think it shows a commitment by this board, again, ever how small it might be, and their general fund dollars going to road maintenance, and it's, you know, again, maybe a small recognition, but it's a recognition of the need. So I would suggest that in our introductory that there be some commentary to that effect, so. So Dan, if I could take you to the A section there with the five supervisors' districts, in each of the five, you have South County Transit called out. You show a project cost, and in every one of the five districts is being $600,000 as a contribution. When I total up, you've allocated for all five districts, and I don't get how that works because it operates in two districts and touches maybe the third, but when I do the math, I got $2.176 million to a $600,000 project, and so if you go to, just take A3-2, where it's District One, you have South County Transit there, project cost $600,000, allocating $300,000 from that district. You turn the next page, you take $116,000 from District Two, $580,000 from District Three, $600,000 from District Four, and $580,000 from District Five. I don't get how that math works, that doesn't make any sense to me, so what is that?
This appears to be something we will have to correct in the final document because you're correct.
I do appreciate you bringing that up.
And really, what we're putting in here is the cost of a capital purchase. This doesn't.
Of the what?
Capital purchases, so this is really the purchase of new vehicles for that.
Oh, it didn't, okay, it just says.
This doesn't show the operating costs for that, that's not part of this document, so.
But why would you capture it in districts that don't have that? It may be.
I agree, it shouldn't be. It should be confined to the districts where the system operates.
Right.
And so we'll, we will make that correction in the final.
All right, and then if I could go to the B section, the pavement section, and again, I want to thank you for some of the work that's already happened this season. I know we got a late start in some cases, and operation maintenance has been, you know, working pretty furiously out there, particularly our force account, our county crews. I want to note on page B111, those show 2021 projects, their force account, but my recollection was, if I turn it over to B113, that I'd gone through with you and Mr. Vicari and Mr. Mogisi, how that would bridge the, you know, this year and next construction season, be it 2021, and I see a lot of street repairs on page 13 that I thought were going to be accomplished this year, and, because we, again, the Rosemont section we took out, and I thought we were going to reallocate, so as long as we have the ability to do that and working with you this season, because some of those roads, as you can see, are 20, 29, 22, 24 pavement condition, and they are in terrible shape, and I tell you, it's noticeable the work you're doing, I tell you, it's really noticeable when you get the new pavement in some of those sections out there, and, you know, other sections are just in tremendously bad shape. So I guess my question is, is that some of those things show up on 13, again, recognize there's a budget for each of the districts, we can still get that work accomplished this year?
Yeah, I'm going to pass this over to probably to Ron and Resa.
I know we've had multiple meetings, I got my, I didn't bring my sheet down, it's upstairs, so I got my notes, so, but I got a pretty good memory about what we talked about, so.
Ron Vicari, Director of Transportation. Yes, as a matter of fact, the last project, you see SB One Phase Five over on B110. Those locations and funding amount have not been determined yet, so the work that we've done with you in the last couple of weeks has not made it into the tip because the tip was complete before we had been through that process.
Okay, so let me follow you, so I was looking at page 11, but on 10 you say SB One Phase Five.
So there's a project there that doesn't actually list the locations?
Oh, okay.
Because we were still working on that.
Okay, so I could take that little note there and then transfer for District Five, the areas we talked about, okay.
Correct, so the locations that we've worked on in the last couple of weeks will in fact go into that project, they're just not, weren't done in time to show in this.
Okay, that's fine, so those insert into that category, and there are other districts, obviously, all four, five districts represented, but.
That's correct.
Okay, and that is work that can be, assuming weather holds, we can get some of this force account work done this year, this construction season?
That's correct. Some of the force count work will take place in the end of this summer.
Okay.
The remainder will be done next year.
Okay, so I know, again, we meet frequently, but I just want to be sure, because again, I've set some expectations, and also lowered some with folks telling them that their section isn't going to get done this year, but there are other sections, as we've talked about here, recognizing that there are some fine tuning that has to go on, so I just want to be sure, Ron.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Oops. My first question was going to be about the South County Transit Program, which I think you already answered, I haven't ever seen that. So, Dan, I want to say good job getting the SB One projects rolled out, so I'm happy about that, and I wondered if you had any predictions for this coming year and how much, does the revenue come in monthly, remind me, or does it come in annually, and so when do you know how much money you're going to get?
Yes, the revenue does come in on a monthly basis, and so what happens is we wait for enough money to accumulate so that we can put out a significant project. We try to shoot for, you've seen the most recent projects, around $10 million. We are looking, however, at the end of next summer to put out, because our objective is to get as much roadwork done as possible, we may put out a smaller project right at the end of the summer to make sure that we can get as much stuff on the ground as possible, but it accumulates on a monthly basis.
So in the first year of the collection and distribution, did the amount of money come in at the amount that we approximated?
It varies by month, but by the end of the year, it has been pretty close to what we've anticipated, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Frost.
And we're expecting quite a bit more this next year. It was like we were anticipating 8 to 11 million the first year, and then it ramps up, so this year, we're expecting.
Yeah, so you're correct, it was, it was actually 7 to 8 million dollars in the first year. It continues to ramp up as a few of the different things come online, but it, we're expecting between 23 and 25 million dollars, and it'll be around 26 million dollars in future years that will remain pretty consistent.
But the, but all these projects that are listed in here are not totally funded. It's best if we don't go out and say, make promises then on projects that are in the tip. We're anticipating most of them are funded, is that how we should look at it?
Yeah, so we, the projects.
I think I got myself set up for some issues, because I went out and made some commitments too on, to my constituents, and then they were like, they came back wondering, you know, about it, so I want to make sure I'm messaging it properly to them.
Yeah, and I think in fact, it's why the overlay project that I mentioned on B110, it still doesn't list all of the projects or the funding amount, because we'll have to see as things progress. As I mentioned with Supervisor Peters' question, we do have, we can anticipate what we're going to receive through SB One, and it has been pretty close to the amount, so we're able to accurately anticipate that. What's also anticipated in our funding program is our expectation of what we can receive from some of the competitive funding streams, such as those that we receive through SECOG, so that, that's why some of these projects, we do have to wait till the year progresses, and we are going with the most aggressive projection, but the last projects, the projects you see where these number, where they actually identify the locations, those have funding already dedicated to them that, that we're really sure will be realized.
Okay, I have one general question. When we're building, when we're doing overlay, or we're doing any maintenance, or building new, and if it's receiving funding from Measure A dollars, are we putting signage out while those projects are going on to let people know where the funding's coming from?
We are, and in fact, we're working on a new sign that's been identified, that they're asking that we would start utilizing, and we're in the middle of now making those signs, and we'll be putting the new sign up on all projects, but yes, we are.
Great, thank you. And then on a specific project, they'll list the roadway candidate locations for future overlay. In District One and Two, you have Fruit Ridge Road. I know you can't crystal ball it completely, but, you know, where's that project looking as far as likelihood of when that might happen?
So. So it is a high priority, and the projects listed is, those candidate projects are really the next in line. You know, I would say it would be in the future year as that one in particular is of the highest priority. We're also, Dan mentioned earlier about the $209 million going out through the SECOG flexible round. You know, we certainly hope to have a emphasis placed on fix it first and really hope that we walk away from that funding round with a significant amount of funding going towards our paving program. So a really aggressive round of funding, if we're able to bring a lot of more money into our paving program. You may see even earlier than that as far as the start of design, but I would think the 2021 summer would be a good estimate.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just on that, is there any way that, again, you don't know when the money's going to be received? I don't know when, if it becomes immediately available or not, but is that something you could have programmed for the 2020 summer? I mean, use Fruit Ridge, but there are other projects. Is it, will the money be available? I think that's, you know, if I hear one thing from folks, it's just that, you know, even with the progress we're making, you get another year or two, you get a wet winter like this, and that deterioration, it just eats away at what's in place that's already in bad condition. So is there any ability to, you know, package that in such a way? I mean, I don't know what sort of design has to go into overlay projects, you know, you've got to figure out where utilities are and so forth, but maybe the curb alterations. But again, assuming that we were to get some of that flexible funding, you know, 2021, that's two winters away.
Yeah, so we are anticipating, and you can see, we're, we basically stay at least one project ahead of what we have funding for as far as the design's concerned, so that we can roll out these projects as quickly as possible, and then we wait for the accumulation of funding. We are working hard as we do anticipate in a really competitive round and being competitive in the SECOG. So currently, we're under design on a lot more overlays than we have funding in anticipation that we will be able to realize significantly more money out of that funding opportunity.
I want to introduce, and I appreciate the response, I guess introduce another thought here, and I know I called you on it recently and talked to Reza. PG&E is doing a lot of work in neighborhoods, and with our pavement, you know, restoration requirements, they're doing half sections or bike lane sections depending upon what they, where they are in the street. And they're working in neighborhoods where we haven't had a chance to overlay in 30 or 40 years.
Fifty.
Yeah, 50 or 60 years, okay. So the point being that, I don't, I don't know if you know the schedule, because I know when I called initially, we weren't sure who was doing the work out there. They have contractors that don't have PG&E trucks. That needs to be done. That's important work, safety and certainly the customer service. But I guess my point of asking the question is, is that if we knew where they were going to be, and whether it was in District Five or District Three or any one of the other, you know, three districts, that it might be the ability to pinpoint, as I suggested to you, that we're, now I've got a street out there that had a chip seal that, you know, where the pavement surface wasn't all that bad, but we didn't, it's not even, it wasn't on our chip seal list, it was on our repaving list, and we weren't going to get to it for a while, where we maybe marry it up so at least folks get a, you know, rather than a half-done or half-baked project of some sort, at least get something that we recognize we're not going to get in some of these neighborhoods probably for the next 10 or 15 or 20 years. It's just when I look at the magnitude of this and what we at least have available to us now. So I guess my question, Ron, is, is that what sort of coordination with PG&E? They get encroachment permits, we know what neighborhoods they're working in. It seemed to me that it might be smart, money on our part, if they're in there, depending upon what level of restoration having to go to, but you know, in these aged streets and, you know, where maybe the surface is in pretty good shape, I mean, the subsurface is pretty good shape, but the surface needs to be redone. I guess I'd like to see us try to figure that out. And again, you know, we have to be a little bit flexible, but you know, they haven't been in there probably in the same amount of time. They won't be back once they're making those fixes for a long time, and we're going to have these streets that are, you know, half or one-third away, you know, done. And aesthetically, obviously, they're like odd, but just the drivability of some of those surfaces, assuming that the base is in good shape. So I don't know what sort of coordination we're doing. There are other utility providers, but PG&E I know is very active, and I see them all over the place in these neighborhoods.
Yeah, we are coordinating with the utilities on a regular basis, and in the consent calendar, earlier today was actually a, an item that talks to just this, we're working with the city of Sacramento, and we have other, three utilities working in one area. And we're able to take the money from all three parties and actually do the correct restoration of that roadway. We balance that with the needs of the roadway because what certainly we can't do, and just to give you some of the complications of, it can be a very, very, a great process for us to work with these utilities. However, if that roadway isn't next in our priority, we don't want what the utility, where the utilities work to dictate our priorities. It's very important that we stick to the most effective way to manage our own pavements. But in the cases where they are addressing a roadway that also falls in line with our priority, then it makes a lot of sense for us to step in with that utility and develop a partnership, meaning we can take the costs of which maybe their requirement under our restoration detail is to slurry, and we can use that to, towards the proper fix, which may in fact be an overlay. And so we are working with them on a regular basis. There is some times when that roadway just is nowhere near our priorities, and they do just progress with only doing the restoration that's required because we don't have the opportunity to partner with them.
Well, let me ask this, because you took it to the reverse kind of what I was asking in the sense that, what I was asking, that for example, when I used the area in Rosemont that was on our list, but we weren't going to get to it for a while, it was on overlay, that they did a slurry. Now, part of it was seemed to me that if, in fact, that was my point earlier, that if the, you know, if the base is in pretty good shape, it didn't require a lot of base repair, then why wouldn't we have, if they've got contractors out there, you know, whoever they're using, whether they're using Tiger, Granite, some other third party, it would seem to me that it might be smart to go the other direction, that they're not dictating the priorities. Because what I've got now is a situation where, you know, the streets have done, and it wasn't done, it wasn't the overlay, but we didn't, we didn't have the opportunity to partner, so we're not going to go in there necessarily slurry, and it's just double work. And so I guess I'd like to see us, you know, that works both ways. Not just taking the money and putting towards a pavement overlay, I get that, that makes sense, we've talked about that. But even in the reverse, where they're out there, and they've got a crew out there, and you know, if we have to juggle priorities, I, it just, it seems to me we've got to be more nimble. And again, I know we have a process, they have a process, they have timelines, we don't drive theirs, they don't drive ours. But I would hope that, you know, maybe we have a key person in our department that works with, you know, not just PG&E, but that's what I was using because that's where they're doing a lot of work in these neighborhoods. But, and we have, you know, other relationships. That one seems to me, because they're going to be here for a long time to come, they're going to continue to do that work, and I just would like to see us, you know, have a product that's certainly more aesthetic, but also, you know, buys us more time, you know, assuming it wasn't, you know, putting money, and maybe working with them. While they got the crew, they're doing half the street, they're having to cut the line down and anything else, just do the whole thing, you know? Put the slurry on there and, you know, if it was in good enough condition to meet our acceptable levels, and then it buys us more time. So that's what I'm looking for, Ron. I mean, I get it on the other piece of it, but-
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So I think it's a great point that Supervisor Natale brings up or concern. I think I've expressed it as it relates to the South Oak Park community several times because, as Don mentioned, his district, PG&E is doing a lot of work in a lot of parts of the county, but they're doing a ton of work in South Oak Park right now, as are our sewer district, SASD.
As are all the water departments that are in water meters.
SAC City's completing their water meter program as it runs through that part of the unincorporated county. So the streets are an absolute mess. We've got plates, we've got trench plates out there, we have just really, really rough roads. So my question is, do we have a policy in DOT that recognizes that there's some minimal level of acceptance in terms of the amount of time that our residents have to live with torn-up streets before we come in and resurface based on the disconnect between it being a priority for us and our scheduling versus a utility in their scheduling? And if we don't, maybe we should think about that.
First, I want to address, I do hear what you're saying, and we will take every opportunity to try to, you know, do as best we can to strengthen. But the answer is yes, we do have the policy. And some of the roadways that you're mentioning, I think those are a perfect example that there is multiple utilities. So we do try to get the timing correct, so once the utilities are out of the way, we will be able to come in there and dress the roads. So we leave them in a good condition that the neighborhood can be happy with. And in Rosemont, I know we're kind of timing the overlays to make that happen. And some of the roadways in which you mentioned, there's multiple utilities, so oftentimes we're waiting for that last utility to get out of the way before we get in there. And so oftentimes, that window gets spread to multiple years. And so we are working, recognizing, I do, I have heard your concerns, and we also share in those concerns. We do recognize that that's very frustrating for the community to see the roads get torn up. And so we do try to get in there as quickly as we can, if not partner with the utility so they're doing the work, and they can, they can make sure that they do the restoration before they even leave the area. But each case, we work with them on every case, and every case seems to be unique.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, though, is that, let's say, just by way of example, if you have, in that part of the district I represent, you have a PG&E that comes in, has to do gas pipeline work, and it's relatively close to the same time that the city of Sacramento has to complete their water meter work. But SASD, and their schedule says, well, even after that other last utility, the city of Sacramento Water Department finishes their work, we're not scheduled to come in for nine months, maybe a year's time. So do we then, as that last agency that would resurface the road after all that work, say, okay, yes or no, that's okay, you can leave the roadway in a really bad condition for as long as a year, and the residents have to kind of accept it? Or do we work with that last utility, say, listen, we, you know, we can't leave the roadway in a condition for that length of time. You need, as that last utility, that subterranean utility, I'll call it, to figure out how you're going to change the schedule so we don't leave the community with, you know, shoddy roadways for an extensive period. Do we do that?
Yeah, I'm trying not to get too much into the weeds here, but so the answer is that, so the way it works is that the utility is required to do, to meet our trench restoration detail. And there's some, we can either have them just do what our restoration detail is, or we can work with them to try to partner. So in the case that you mentioned, a utility going in and trenching the roadway, if they're going to come back and they're going to slurry seal the roadway, for instance, and a lot of times on our residential roads, it's half of the roadway, which we know that, so sometimes we partner with them to do the other half. We take that savings, we wait for the next utility that's going to come in there. If that utility is too far into the future, we would not, we would say just do the restoration detail. We can't, we're not going to take the savings and leave it, at least the section that you've got all your trench work in, unslurried. We're going to let you go ahead and do your trench restoration, and we're maybe going to partner with the second guy, the second utility that's coming in. And so again, it's a unique situation. I hear, I hear the frustration and do recognize, and we're working to really come up with the best partnership we can, recognizing that we can't extend these to multiple years.
No, I understand. It almost seems like the last, you know, the last utility that's, has work to do underneath the streets, if they're going to hold up the whole process for completion of the surfacing of the streets, should bear some responsibility of, quite frankly, the sunk cost of getting at least a slurry on there temporarily before it's completely resurfaced. Otherwise, you know, the disorganization of, you know, or lack of coordination between all of the parties is leaving those neighborhoods with incredibly rough roads. And I know, I know it's never going to necessarily be perfect, but if there's, you know, room for improvement, I would highly recommend, suggest that maybe we have a confab with all the utilities to figure out how we do this better. Because, you know, you know me, I'm out in that community, driving around very frequently, and I'm not seeing more roadways completed, I'm seeing more roadways torn up. I'm not saying that lays at the feet of our DOT as their responsibility, because you're simply coming in as the last agency to complete the project, so to speak. But there seems to be even more subterranean trench work that goes out there lately, and it's just, and it's not, it's not being followed up timely with resurfacing.
I appreciate it. We will work to make that better.
Yeah, we will. We'll absolutely take these comments, working with the utilities.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? I have no speaker slips. We'll take a motion, and then Supervisor Peters will make her announcement. Is there a motion?
I'll move the tip G, including the, excluding the following two projects, the Arnold Way to Mather Boulevard and Douglas Boulevard extension from Mather Boulevard to Excelsior Road.
So are you excluding or are you recusing? I mean, do we need-
I'm excluding, and then we come back with another, for those two.
Just clarifying. Second, my question, Natale? Please vote.
Any other missed vote?
Okay, then I'll get the next, and those two important ones, Arnold Way and Douglas Road. Add them to the, back into the mix. That's my motion.
Second, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Thank you.
At this time, we can take, we have one card for off agenda, John Leroux.
To the Sacramento Board of Supervisors. I, John L. Leroux, would like to recognize the Sacramento County Parks-
Sir, I'm sorry, if you can speak between the mics, we could hear you better.
Okay. That better?
Yes.
I, John L. Leroux, would like to recognize the Sacramento County Parks and Recreation Department Downtown Division. Working for many years as a building security attendant, I have observed Parks and Recreation Division going above and beyond. Salvatore ACs is the department manager. Sal works with this crew with his outstanding leadership. They all work as a well-oiled machine. They start at 4:30 in the morning cleaning up all areas of the Sacramento County buildings, from blowing leaves in fall to clearing drains that may be filled with leaves or rainwater, or cleaning up urine feces that are unfortunately left behind during the nighttime hours or even the daylight hours. They make sure that the employees, they make sure when employees come into work and when they, and when public come to downtown Sacramento County buildings, that all areas surrounding the Sacramento County buildings and all the plants inside the buildings and the ponds surrounding the Sacramento County Administration Building are in pristine conditions. They also do lawn care for all the facilities outside the Sacramento County buildings. This is a huge job. We sometimes take for granted all the hard work that people do. It often goes unnoticed unless there's a complaint that needed to be addressed. The area that the Parks and Recreation covers is huge. It consists of the District Attorney's Office, the County Jail, the Administration Building, Department of Technology, and the Sacramento County Parking Structures. Sal's crew work hard, work very hard to make sure all areas stay in pristine condition for, for the public and for employees to come to work. Everyone in this department should hold their, hold his or her head high. They take pride in their jobs, and you can tell. Sal's crew consists of Sherry, Megan, Ed, Andrew, Patrick, Don, Mel, and Francisco. Thank you all for keeping Sacramento County in such- Thank you all for keeping Sacramento County in such pristine conditions. John Lucian LaRue. I also have a certificate of appreciation for the Parks and Recreation Department for the Downtown Division. I also have one more, um, one more letter. I would like to recognize Ms. Sherry Sutterfield for all her hard work and her dedication to Sacramento County of the Parks and Recreation Department. When I worked for Sacramento County Building Security Attendant, Ms. Sherry Sutterfield always worked hard and always goes out of her way to go the extra mile. If there was something that needed to be done, Sherry was there taking care of it without complaint. Sherry takes pride in her work, and you can tell. She takes care of all the ponds and all the plants inside the Administration Building, along with all the other outside duties for the Downtown County Buildings. Sherry is, her supervisor's right-hand person. She's, is hardworking, and Sal counts on her to fill in for him in his absence. Whenever something needs to be done, she is always there with a smile on her face. Sherry started as an on-call employee and worked her way up to a full-time position, and has dedicated herself to Sacramento County for almost 20 years. Sherry, I would like to thank you for all your hard work and for making Sacramento County shine. John Lucian LaRue. And I also have a certificate of appreciation for Sherry.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, let's give that a hand. And, and Mr. LaRue, did you recently retire?
I did.
Okay, I, I also want to commend you, because you don't know it, but very often, I would be sitting in my office, which overlooks the parking structure, and watching you do your work, and you were about as conscientious of a security person as I've ever seen, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Come on down.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy, and board members. I was pleasantly surprised by a phone call from Mr. LaRue a couple of weeks ago, saying that he wanted to recognize our downtown staff for contract maintenance. And so, we let him know that he could come and speak off agenda, and I just wanted to recognize Sal and Sherry if they could come up here and get their certificates of appreciation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very nice. Can you drop? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don't forget your bag.
Okay. Shall we do appointments?
Sure. That would be item 87. Ready? Okay. For your nominations, you are continuing to July 16th, the Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission, continuing to July 23rd, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, continuing to August 6th, the Children's Coalition, Consumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Elk Grove Consumnis Cemetery District, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, the Public Health Advisory Board, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters. Thank you. I'd like to nominate and reappoint Joyce Carroll and continue the remainder to July 16. Civil Service Commission, Mr. Cerna.
I am reappointing Michael Johnson.
Okay. Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters. I'd like to nominate and reappoint Rick Moran and continue the remainder to July 23rd. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Alastair Pollan and Robert Lewis, and request the process be waived.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Peters. Thank you. Please continue to August 6th. Okay. Supervisor Natoli.
Likewise.
Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Supervisor Cerna.
I'd like to appoint Joseph Wilson.
Okay. And Supervisor Kennedy.
Uh, District Two nominates the reappointment of Chris Parker.
And Supervisor Natoli.
And nominate Jeremy Edwards for reappointment.
Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to July 23rd.
And Supervisor Natoli.
Uh, continue to July 23rd as well.
Okay. And the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Cerna.
Please continue to August 6th.
And Mr. Kennedy.
Please continue to August 6th.
Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters. Thank you. I'd like to nominate and reappoint, um, Michelle Rivas. Just- Okay. And then Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to nominate Mark Shayhan for reappointment and continue the remainder until July 23rd.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Then, I believe we do have closed session?
Yes, we do.
So, we will recess to closed session.
Yes. Wow, that was pretty good. Off the agenda.
Good afternoon. Call back to order the meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Cerna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Next item, please.
Item 86 is the appeal of the decision of the hearing officer's denial of renewal of a general business license and revocation of a business license. The appellant is Michael Lou with the Golden Dragon.
I can introduce this item. Uh, this is a appeal from the April 4th, 2019, hearing officer's decision revoking and denying renewal of the general business license for the Casa Linda Motel. As the board will recall, this was originally heard on May 21st, 2019. There were some questions that arose during that hearing because of evidence that the appellant presented at the hearing. Uh, so the board chose to continue the item to allow time to determine what the current status is of the violations. So, my understanding is there has been a fair amount of work done since that hearing on May 21st. I know a number of departments met in early June. The property's been inspected again, and we're back here today, um, again, with a recommendation from Business Licensing for denying the appeal. Uh, we talked about this last time. Under the county code, there are three different ways that the board can proceed on these sorts of hearings. The options are, the board is authorized to deny the introduction of evidence and decide the matter after hearing oral argument only. The other option is, the board can admit supplementary evidence with respect to the challenges on particular findings, or the board can reject the findings and conclusions of the hearing officer and conduct a de novo hearing. At our last hearing on May 21st, the original thought was that we were going to be recommending just hearing the matter on oral argument, but the appellant did present additional evidence, and so now the recommendation is, and I agree with this, that the board should choose the second option, which is to admit supplementary evidence, um, and then proceed with the hearing. I do not recommend that the board do a de novo hearing. That would basically toss out what the hearing officer did and start over, but I think that the second option of allowing supplementary evidence is appropriate in this matter.
Okay. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just before we embark on the hearing, then, thanks, Chris, so that I get, that helps set the framework for the hearing we're going to have here. But I wanted to be clear, the written report, the last detail is in here, references June 5th. To your knowledge, has there been any additional follow-on, uh, by any of the county departments since that time? It was a coordinated inspection and-
Right. I don't, my understanding, it was June 5th, but I think somebody else from either June or-
Okay, so, but as far, so then what we have here is the most current information as it relates to any inspection of the property?
That's my understanding.
Okay. All right, I just want to be, be clear about that. And then, one other thing, I know that, um, subsequent to the last hearing, obviously, we've gotten the correspondence, the staff report, there was, um, information at our desk here this afternoon, and, um, if folks from the general public are here, are they able to weigh in on this? Is this a hearing where folks, if they have a concern either in, um, about what's being proposed relative to the revocation and denial, and/or either support or oppose that action, they're able to speak at the conclusion of the-
Public testimony can be taken.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, now it's appropriate to hear from the appellant. Are you interested in presenting?
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Abraham Lou. I am the son of Michael Lou, the owner-operator of Casa Linda Motel, doing business under Golden Dragon 888. So, uh, the county has recommended that the revocation be upheld, and, um, primarily, we would ask the board to consider that we've made considerable progress in addressing each of the concerns that the county has listed specifically in the Business Licensing Department. Ms. Kathleen Brown's report on June 5th did indicate that, with the exception of a telephone issue, everything else from her previous inspection has been addressed. And on the telephone issue, there, um, there's an area up for sort of, uh, discussion in terms of how many telephone lines are necessary, how many telephone lines are required for 17 units. We've actually polled, uh, similar properties, similar businesses in the area, and found that they have a similar ratio of one line per 10 rooms, or a little over 10 rooms. But it is something we are willing to consider, should the board feel that it's necessary. As for the inspection conducted by Mr. Parker, um, we feel that there's a wide variety of issues discovered that have been addressed by the pending building permit. So, there are open building permits right now to make, uh, necessary changes to the electrical, gas, and, uh, water heater systems that Mr. Parker did discover. And in the other issues, primarily, uh, things like the, we feel that they primarily address the age of the property, which is quite old, but we are willing and committed to, um, addressing each and every one of the issues that Mr. Parker has noted on his report. Lastly, we would like to point out that we have been, uh, we, we have successfully committed, uh, we have successfully closed out issues that Mr. Woodcliff's department has conducted, so I don't feel that in any circumstance we've been, um, neglecting issues that have been brought to us. So, uh, we hope that the board exercises its power and consideration to allow us to continue to operate the business. Uh, we feel that we can be better operators than previous owners. We've taken care of a lot of the issues that they've neglected. Uh, we've, you know, worked with the county to address each of the issues, and, you know, we hope, we, you know, the board hopefully doesn't want to see Casa Linda as a, you know, vacant property, dilapidated lot of that nature. So, we hope the board, you know, gives us the opportunity to continue working with the county and, uh, operating. Thank you.
Thank you. Have there any questions? Mr. Natoli?
Well, Ms., Ms. Peters had her hand first, so.
I didn't.
I didn't either, so.
Um, I, I have a couple of questions. In our updated, uh, staff report, it says, on June 5th, 2019, um, there was an inspection by the code enforcement, uh, the sheriff's department, and state contractors, license board, et cetera, and there's still, um, numerous violations, uh, as stated here, but not limited to exposed electrical wiring and lighting receptacles, damaged electrical panels with exposed wiring, broken, rotted, split and buckled walls and roof coverings, heat air conditioning minute, uh, units improperly installed and a state of disrepair, holes in walls, missing broken shower tub hardware, and it goes on, um, including bedbugs and visible mold. So, I'm wondering, you've had this property for three years, I think it was 2016, and, um, you've been under pressure to improve it for over a year, and, so, I, can you explain these things? Why would you not notice those things and have had them fixed, be, when you, particularly when you knew there was an inspection coming?
Uh, well, ma'am, we've, we have been fixing issues that have been brought up, right? So, in terms, typically, there could be some discussion with the inspection officer, like, for example, on the issue of bedbugs or cockroaches, we have an inspection report, um, conducted recently by a licensed pest inspector.
Recently after the June 5th inspection, or before?
Yes, ma'am. Afterwards.
And what does it say?
It says, uh, we do, the pest inspector did not find any evidence of either cockroach or bedbug infestation.
What about all the other items? Damaged electrical panels and roof coverings and holes in walls and-
So, for a lot of the large structural issues, we do have a building permit open. It's undergoing plan review with the county right now. So, um, once the plans are approved, then we will be making those fixes.
So, um, is there anybody here from building that would, could speak to all of these items being corrected in the, uh, building plan? Oh, hi. Okay, all right. Thank you. I was looking for you over there. I didn't see you, June.
Changed places today. Good afternoon, supervisors. So, I am here on behalf of multiple county departments. June Powell's Mays from the county council's office. And first, I will speak to some of the issues that were raised by appellant, if you don't mind. Um, they asked that you consider the progress that they have made, and while I understand that request, you also have to consider the length of time they have owned this property. Um, and they were issued their business license in January of 2016. Conditions were imposed on that license in June of 2018. Since the time that they have owned it, unfortunately, it has maintained its presence as a problem property. The fact that they polled similar businesses, and they too are in violation, should absolutely not be persuasive for this board. Uh, it does not change the fact that they did not meet the requirements that they were supposed to meet. Um, open building permits also shows that they submitted an application, but it does not mean that the permit has even been issued. And so, no work can begin until a permit is issued. Um, the bottom line here is that the county code authorizes the revocation and the denial of business licenses if conditions imposed on the license are violated, also if nuisance code, or zoning code, or building code, or dangerous building code violations exist. Um, as of April 4th, 2019, a hearing officer found that multiple conditions on the license had been violated, and that there were open code enforcement and building inspection cases. Unfortunately, as of June 5th, 2019, the same was true. There were multiple violations of the conditions on the license, including the inoperable telephones, and the fact that there were open code enforcement and building inspection cases. Uh, it was made clear in the report that's prepared for today, as well as the attachments, that the building, uh, code violations that were initially found were still in existence at the June inspection, and more violations were also found. The same was true for many of the code enforcement violations and dangerous building violations. And so, based upon that, we are requesting today that you would deny the appeal, and let me just backtrack one moment and say, we do not have a perpetual correction- the building code violations that were initially found were still in existence at the June inspection, and more violations were also found. The same was true for many of the code enforcement violations and dangerous building violations. And so based upon that, we are requesting today that you would deny the appeal. And let me just backtrack one moment and say, we do not have a perpetual correction period. So property owners who are given notices of violation, whether it's a zoning code violation, or a building code violation, or a substandard housing violation, are expected to comply within a finite period of time. And unfortunately, the appellant here wants a perpetual correction period, and that cannot be, as it is not authorized by the county code. So we are asking today that you would deny the appeal, that you would adopt the hearing officer's decision as of April 4th, and that you would also make an additional finding that the conditions on the license still remain in violation, and that there are open building and code enforcement cases.
So how would they... If we were to do that, then the motel would be closed?
Yes.
And would they then have... Go back and fix everything as if... And then start over in the licensing?
They certainly could.
If that's what they wanted to do?
If they wanted to maintain the property, but it's my understanding that it's an escrow to be sold.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Natale.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, June. I wanted to ask Abraham a couple of questions, if I could, so if you might just stand by for a second, please. Abraham, again, I see the letter, and you spoke to it here on behalf of your family, but when I look at the list, the most recent one, recognizing obviously that you've... There's been an attempt to address some of the issues, and whether or not there's a pending building permit application, some of these things are pretty serious. I mean, they didn't just happen overnight, and others have, you know, happened, obviously you have damage from tenants. But as Ms. Peters read, you know, the general summation, and when I see the inspection checklist, I trust you got a copy of this, or you and the family did, you know, it makes pretty clear in that notice, and this is the one from June 5th, when Mr. Parker was out there, it says pretty explicitly, it says, "Please take note that the county has found that the dwelling or property at the above location is substandard and constitutes a public nuisance. Each of the conditions noted on this inspection checklist is a misdemeanor violation of the Sacramento Housing Code and constitutes a separate offense for each and every day during any portion which a violation is committed, continued, or permitted." And they inspected 17 of the 18 units, I guess the 17 that are rented, and they cleared none of them. I guess I just, you know, beyond the building being old, and maybe some of this being roofs that were out over time and so forth, how is it that you can, you know, explain the condition in which all of the rooms, each and every one of the units, is in some level of violation? And many of these, you know, hinges and so forth, there's some pretty serious things in here. There's, I mean, I don't think you'd want to live in those conditions. I don't... I know I wouldn't. So I guess I'd like to give you an opportunity to respond. This is, you know, this is a serious hearing today, but the violations are pretty, pretty serious, Abraham.
Yes, sir, absolutely. For the various serious violations, as Ms. Powells Mays did mention, they do require a building permit to fix. So it's not as if we can go in today and make changes to the electrical panel. That actually triggers another violation, like work done without permit, things like that. So for a lot of the large systemic changes, like, we do need to have plans reviewed and approved before we can begin work.
I'll just give you one example off the list. Talks about a toilet in one of the units that apparently the toilet that was broken, so the repair that was made was, rather than replace the toilet, duct tape and cardboard. That's not acceptable. I mean, you wouldn't do that in your own home. I wouldn't do that in my home. And so I guess that's the type of thing, when I look here, beyond what doesn't require a building permit to do that, and, you know, whether these occurred a day before or a year before the inspector showed up, it's indicative, though, of a long list. Some of their systemic, but I see some of these are just general maintenance. If somebody moved out of a room before you were to rent it again, you think you want that in good repair. It doesn't mean you're going to replace the roof in order to rent it, but some of these things are pretty common sense, Abraham. And I know this has been a struggle, but on the other hand, when I read this, and this, you know, I haven't inspected the property myself, and I'm not licensed to do that, but when I, you know, I see these things, but I also then, when I, you know, and you said the pest inspector didn't find any presence, but, I mean, this noted throughout here, both cockroach and bedbug infestations. Now, even some of the best hoteliers probably have to, you know, work real hard to make sure they're... But those are types of things where you're, you know, this isn't like people, I mean, are just, you know, living there for free. You're, you know, this is a business. And again, I'm not lecturing you as much as I'm just pointing out that, as I've weighed this and certainly thought about it, and I'm very familiar with, you know, this part of my district, is that, I get it, you buy an older property, and it may have been in a poor condition, but, you know, I don't see where there's been, over time, a concerted effort beyond making a permit application, and things have gotten older. That roof is the same roof as when you bought it three years ago, I trust. But then some of these units, the unit stuff, that, those are normal type maintenance. If the wall repairs weren't completed, well, why weren't they? I mean, I don't know who's managing the property. I don't know if it was you, or, you know, the sister, or your father, or whoever, but that's really not the point. The point is here is that there's been a long list of violations, some of it related to calls for service, some are related to business licensing conditions, but a lot relate to the property and what sort of condition it's in when you rent it to folks who are, you know, lodging there. Now, they may cause part of the damage, but that's part of the risk of, you know, being in that business. So I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to add, because when I read through this most recent list, acknowledging obviously some of the efforts that have been made to reduce calls for service and so forth, I see a property that's in very, very poor condition in a lot of respects. And when I... When the building inspector says it's substandard and it's a public nuisance, that concerns me, because it's your property, you own it, or your family does, and yet we're renting to the general public, and they're the ones that are occupying those units, and I'm concerned when I see those conditions. And so, and some of those, safety, we need electrical permits and so forth, and exposed wires. So I don't know, is there anything else you wanted to add, Abraham? I just...
I'd also like to point out, like, for an example, we have been working with Mr. Parker addressing specific conditions. So not only are we making the corrections, we've also agreed with Mr. Parker on, like, a plan moving forward. For example, there's a disagreement on whether there are pest infestations, but we are doing... We will be doing monthly inspection slash pest control as part of this plan. So it's not just addressing each of these points, but also making larger system improvements.
Well, just wanted to ask you on that point, then. So this prompted you to reach out to a pest controller. Had you contemplated doing that before the county ever scheduled this hearing? I mean, again, good management would say that whether you're living there or not, that, you know, it would just... Good property management would say that, you know, when you're having a turnover of folks, that you would have regular pest management. You shouldn't have to be told by the county or by anybody that if there's an issue out there, you want to prevent that. So have you had that regularly for the last three years, or was it just when somebody complained, and then... I mean, I don't know. I'm asking you the question.
Yes, sir. I believe we have had it regularly, but maybe not at the interval that Mr. Parker felt we should have been doing it.
I'm going to ask you a real frank question. You don't have to answer this.
Yes, sir.
Would you... Would you yourself want to stay for any period of time in those rooms that you're renting to other folks?
I wouldn't be able to answer that, sir.
Okay.
I don't live or work in the area.
No, I know, Abraham, but it kind of goes to the suitability, and the only reason I asked it, it wasn't a trick question. I asked that because it goes to the suitability of the place that you're renting for folks that may not have a lot of means, and they may do damage to property, and, you know, and that's objectionable, and certainly, you know, it's tough to, you know, when somebody pops a hole in a wall or so forth. But it's the conditions by which people live in, and, again, this is a business. You're renting that to folks, and that's why I asked the question. And I didn't, you know, it wasn't to try to trick you, but I did, again, that to me becomes a level by which I think we need to think about this, and I certainly frame in my thoughts around that as well, is that what sort of living conditions are we allowing to exist there? So, okay, thanks, Abraham.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
May I make a quick statement?
Sure.
My name is Akash Law with Law, Real Estate, and Development. I'm currently negotiating right now with the seller of the project. I've spent, I've poured tons of hours into this project, understanding the problem, and frankly, you are correct. I mean, is the hotel or motel substandard? It is. And personally, they're a small business. They're definitely probably overwhelmed. You know, they need several different trades to get this done. I'm a general contractor, and, I mean, the units do need to be revamped. But, you know, I think that there is a win-win situation that can come out of this. I'm currently working with the Department of Human Assistance and Volunteers of America to try to help house people that maybe need emergency support services or need affordable housing. There's definitely some land in the back that might have some opportunity. But what I would like to discuss or bring to your attention is what type of win-win situation is their option? So if their hotel motel license is revoked, what does that mean? That another... A buyer cannot have a license reestablished, or that can be reinstated? The... I've talked to the planning committee. There's no option really for apartments unless you go through a over-year rezoning process. So what... How can we work together to create a win-win situation?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, June, but, yeah, you answered that question already. They could fix all of the violations, bring it up to code, you know, address all these issues, and then reapply for a business license.
Yes.
Yes. So, I mean, I guess I don't see the difference if this appeal is not successful and the business license is pulled away, and you buy the property, you're going to have to do the same thing anyway.
Reapply for the license.
Yeah.
The licenses are not transferable.
Right. So you're... Your situation's not going to... I don't see where it's going to be any different one way or the other.
Sure. And I think that another issue that should be taken into consideration is that, you know, given that area, it's close to light rail, you know, is this hotel more safe or less safe if it's vacated? That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Serna.
Thank you. So I had a question for June.
Fill out a speaker card. Look behind you.
My question is this. If... It is this board's discretion, right, to grant the appeal or not?
Yes.
You've given a very strong recommendation not to do that for various reasons. I guess I want to know from our attorneys, what is this... If we were to grant the... What the appellant is asking, what liability does that open up the county to for the next appellant that says, "Wait a second, they got special treatment, they were in violation for a long time on a number of... For a number of different reasons, and you gave them a break. We want the same discretion applied to us." So what kind of liability do we assume, even if we wanted to grant the appeal? We should know that. The public should understand that.
Well, first of all, you're setting a precedent. If you do grant the appeal, and you will, I'm sure, have other appellants do just as you suggested, and say, "Well, you did it for Casa Linda, please do it for me." There is a certain amount of responsibility that is attributable to the board when you have the opportunity to ensure that a business is complying with the county codes, and you decline to do that. As far as the details and the level of liability, it varies, but certainly, the board does subject itself to potential complaints and liability if it allows substandard buildings to continue to exist after a hearing wherein it has been brought to the board's attention, and the board has had the opportunity to stop it.
Yeah, and I don't see it just that way. I see it as we'd be cherry picking, right? We'd be cherry picking the winners and the losers, and that seems to fly in the face of the principle of, you know, quality under the law. Everyone should be treated similarly here, and we're not a court, but I have a real problem with that... With what you just stated, alluded to, in terms of the precedent that this would set, because then we get this board into the business of playing favorites, frankly, and that's not of interest to me, and I don't think it's necessarily the business of this board to commit themselves to. So I'm not going to be supporting this. You know, I'll let others make motions, but that's my perspective on this.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, maybe, June, while you're there, as it relates to if the denial revocation is upheld today, then will they... Is there an appeal period beyond the board's decision here? I assume it goes, it can be appealed into the courts. But at what point would they then be required to no longer occupy the premises, at least for the purposes of motel? I guess if you have a caretaker's quarters there, someone could reside there to assure the property was secure. And in the event that that was the case, and whether it was the gentleman that spoke a moment ago, or someone else came in to do a renovation or to reoccupy, would, before a business license, it could be reissued? Would we require that all the co-compliance issues be addressed so that if a new operator, a subsequent operator came in, and there was no business license, would that be a condition, or would that be a finding that we would make, that said you couldn't just, you know, you rent it while you're fixing it up, so to speak? So, two questions there.
So the decision of the board becomes final when it is filed with the clerk and served on the appellant. And if the board decides to deny the appeal, then the revocation would be effective at that time. When the revocation is effective, the business must stop operating. The hotel cannot rent rooms any longer to patrons. As far as a license in the future, Laura Jacobson could probably speak more to that issue, but just as an overview, there absolutely would be the expectation before any new license would be issued, that the old code violations, zoning violations, would be corrected.
Okay. And just to follow on to the first question, when the revocation will become final, the motels, hotels are daily rentals. Some folks do weekly and monthly rentals. In the event that that were become final, is any relocation of existing tenants, in the event that they had a longer term or return of the daily room rental, that's a responsibility of the property owner, and so the premises can be vacated immediately? And would it also cover, as I know there's concerns about squatters or others that might move into the property if it were vacant, but you're not going to... But you can't live... People live there for free either, right? There's no coloring of this picture in the... It's so that you say, "Okay, well, they're not paying anything, they can stay there." That's not how it works. Is there a requirement to secure the property? And if so, what's that look like? And is that a part of the order if the revocation is upheld?
So yes, there would be a requirement that the property be secured, lest it become another nuisance. As far as the occupants that the owners have been renting to, it is their responsibility to address whatever contracts or agreements that they have made with those people as far as how long they'll stay in the room. I also neglected to say that if the board denies the appeal today, the property owner can file a writ in Superior Court, but during that time, the revocation remains in place unless or until it is reversed by the Superior Court.
Okay. So the revocation is equivalent, then, to immediately vacating the property?
Yes.
And how is that enforceable? Who enforces that?
Guys with the badges.
Okay, sheriff, okay. So the sheriff's department would be the... Would post the property, and then is there... There's not an eviction process, basically it's a daily rental, so...
And the notice would be served, of course, on the property owners.
On the family, or whoever, or the corporation. Okay, thanks.
I have one for you. They've had their license for three years.
Yes.
When they got their original license, was there ever any inspection done, or do we know what the condition of the premises was when they got their original license?
I'll let Laura Jacobson from Business Licensing speak to that. I'll let Laura Jacobson from Business Licensing speak to that.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My understanding is the license was issued in January of 2016, and at some time that spring, there was the original code enforcement case that was opened by Mr. Wickliffe. And that was a case that was just recently closed. So that case was open for nearly three years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I thought what you were asking is when the motel got the, any motel gets a license, is there an inspection that it's habitable?
No.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a couple of cards here. If the board's done. John Lee.
I'm the listing broker for this property, and I just have a gut feeling that if it does get revoked as a record, that it says it's revoked, so it might be an onerous task to go through the standard process to renew, for the next buyer to renew, get a business license. Is that correct? It's not a simple solution of, you know, the next buyer to simply get a new business license to apply for it. But when they see this as a record that was revoked, it becomes a more onerous task to get the business license for the next owner? Is that correct?
Yeah, but it's really not the county's problem.
Well, I, I think it becomes more onerous. I think that what, to the questions we were asking a moment ago, would that, whether there was any inspection done at the time of a transfer of property? I think what this does, if in fact we uphold this, is that it sets a marker saying that at this point in time, the property was in this condition. Doesn't say you can't get a business license. In fact, anybody would buy, whether it was you or the other gentleman or somebody else, would have to get a business license, not transferable. But since we don't do inspections, even though we had outstanding code violations, I think what this would effectively do, though, it's going to stop folks from renting those properties that are substandard. And I'll be very honest with you and everybody else in the audience here today, that concerns me, those conditions out there.
Right, right. I mean.
Yeah. And so you draw this line that says, you gotta, you gotta do the repairs.
Right. Just working backwards, I mean, if I can visualize, this next owner is probably chance, likely to be more qualified to run this and know that they're getting into, well, in fact, even working back from there, this property has been in contract for about five times or so because they were scared of the fact that this business license is going to be revoked. And I'm just wondering if it's an issue at all to, to say, let's say it's revoked, and it's on the record that this hotel motel is revoked. And I tell the next owner, well, you can just simply apply for another business license, just like any other.
Well, you'd have to clear the code enforcement.
Yeah, as long as you fix it.
Okay.
Like I said, it's not our responsibility. That's the property's responsibility.
I know it's not your, it's just, it's just what is in the mindset of this new, new owner.
They'd have to make the corrections, Mr. Lee. They'd have to make the corrections.
And would there be a big loss in having this license revoked on paper saying it's revoked versus this new buyer buying this motel?
Not as long as the repairs have been made and all of the violations cleared. It's not, there's not going to be prejudice against this property having a business license moving forward, provided that all of the codes or, all of the code violations are fixed.
Because I don't know what the big deal was of all these buyers getting into this property and thinking about the risk involved with the potential of this business license being revoked. But in fact, they would have to anyways apply for a new business license in any motel.
Right.
So I don't know what the big deal is and why this buyer is scared and canceling counter.
But you'd have to ask him.
Well, yeah, they're telling me.
It's not our, it's not our, it's not in our corner.
Well, maybe the condition of the property.
Yeah. Have you read the report?
Again, you know, Casa Linda is, what, that's, I know it's been there at least 45 years, maybe 50, maybe 60-year-old property. It hasn't always been in disrepair. But that, you know, looking at that, and then I think people might be more worried about it. I could be wrong. Not so much the status of the business license, that's a pretty normal transaction. It's what they're going to buy in order to have to repair and fix the property to get it up to some acceptable standards. I think, I mean, I'm only guessing, but it seems to me that might be what worries folks.
The challenges.
Challenges, absolutely.
Of being able to not have control of what the county will approve based on what the efforts that they will put in in replying for this business license. They'll have to meet certain code requirements that they, they seem to not have control over because it's up to the county to approve or not. That, this is what I'm getting for, for a lot of these buyers, and they're.
Well, that, it sounds like you might have more inexperienced buyers approaching you.
No, I have, I have buyers who've owned the motels in the area, just like a mile.
Then maybe it's a price negotiation.
Is it what?
Maybe it's a price negotiation.
The advantage you have is that you have a complete list of everything that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
So you know what, the path to the license.
Consequence of this makes it more difficult. We understand, we understand it makes it more difficult to have a transaction that follows it, but that's the consequence of not following the rules and not having your property meet code. I can't put it more simply than that.
Yeah. I think we understand where you're coming from.
I mean, yeah, okay. Well, I'm just trying to communicate what these buyers are telling you. It's, there's a risk involved if you have something on record that you have to meet, apply for new business license and the element of meeting up the code. I think there's a risk in that.
Which they're going to have to do anyway.
It's a rule for everyone.
Yeah. Versus another motel that can buy where it meets up to the code, code standards, which is an easier transaction for these buyers.
Yeah.
Okay. And if I could just, just offer that, again, you have representatives in the audience today of, you know, the neighborhood association out there, and certainly this property along Folsom Boulevard, as you probably well know, we're putting significant monies into the public infrastructure along Folsom Boulevard because of its proximity to light rail, because of the need to bring street lighting into the area and to, you know, help with mobility. And, and so I think there's an opportunity to complement that. And I know that the church adjacent, obviously, they, that property has, you know, been under renovation. They've done some major investment there. The property to the, to the east has been challenged, although my understanding is that they've done a better job in managing that more recently. And so I think there's some really opportunity along that north side of Folsom.
Yeah, there is an opportunity, and I have a gut feeling that Casa Linda Motel may have even a better use for the buyers.
Right.
But they would like to be able to lower the risk level. And we have some really good buyers who step up and want to keep it in the area.
If you have future buyers as the representative of the district, I'd be happy to, you know, call together the right folks, whether it's, you know, trying to make the corrections and/or other uses, certainly whether it's zoning and so forth. Again, some of those are, require, you know, different entitlements. But I, but I'm more than willing, I'm very interested in seeing upgrades to that segment of our county, but certainly of Folsom Boulevard. And I think we've got some good things going there, but this could be a compliment rather than a detriment. So I'll just.
And I know what they're up against. This revocation could be a challenge for a lot of buyers. And to the extent that not only will they see the risk involved, contrary, what we talked about is consensus, but also there might not be any more interest in developing further in this with that license revocation on record. And we might even see to the extent that not only will this be a vacant hotel, but it will be vacant. I mean, the land value, I was told, is about $800,000. I don't know even if someone, a buyer would go to that extent to buy at that low price with this revocation and the risk of risk involved. I'm just visualizing what the end result will be next year when this falls through to that extent.
Okay. I think, I think at this point, your question and issue has been asked and answered. We hear you. We understand where you're coming from. And I need to, I gave you a lot more time than we normally do speakers, so.
Okay.
I'll call the next speaker.
Thanks.
Linda Hammett.
Hi, good afternoon, speakers, Supervisors, and thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak. My name's Linda Hammett, and I represent the Butterfield Riviera East Community Association, which is the neighborhood association of which the Casa Linda Motel is a part. Many of our residents are adjacent to this motel. I am here to support the denial of the appeal for the revocation and the renewal of the business license. One of the things that we've observed in the community is the repeated pattern of behavior and the inordinate calls for service. I did send a letter to the, to the board, and I thank you for including that in the materials. We are very, very concerned of the repeated violations and the, as I said, the pattern of behavior where these violations, when they're brought to the attention of the owner, yes, they may go ahead and remedy those violations, but then more violations will crop up, and this seems to be a pattern over and over and over. I'm concerned about the health and safety hazards for the surrounding community, not to mention for the residents of the motel themselves. We've, residents of the community have, have observed so many scenes of illicit behavior which are documented in the various community agencies. But one thing that struck me as I've read through the materials and as I've listened to testimony here is the lack of proactivity of, on the part of this particular business owner. Now, for myself personally, I am strongly, strongly proactive of small business, and I applaud the county's repeated attempts to work with this business owner. And I thank you very much for those, for those attempts and for allowing the business owner to try to remedy this. But this has gone on way too long, and no remedy seems to be sufficient. I would encourage the Board of Supervisors to deny this appeal. It seems that nothing will satisfy this point.
Can you wrap up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the last card I have for public comment. Nobody else? Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Actually, Tom, before you do, I do have one question, just for clarification. I'm missing something here. According, this business license we have in our packet shows that the business license expired in January 24th. So in essence.
They're closed now.
It's a revocation and a denial and new application, I believe.
Yes. While the expired license is under appeal, it's still in effect.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Senator Natale.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Well, thanks, folks, for being here today. Obviously, a lot of work's gone into this, as I think Krista summarized in her opening comments about this. And certainly, you know, it's, it's never easy when you're, you have a matter before you that you know is certainly going to impact the business. But I think that business has obviously been impacted over the years, and albeit maybe with, you know, certainly some efforts to try to bring it into compliance. It appears to me that in a lot of respects, not only they've fallen short, but I, again, as I've stated here earlier, when Abraham was at the podium, that it concerns me greatly, certainly for the, as noted, you know, the health and safety issues here and the ones that relate to not only the occupants, certainly to those who might own or manage the property, but also to the adjacent residents. And certainly, I don't, you know, relish the idea that we may have a, you know, a vacated or, and I won't say abandoned, but a vacated property. That's not a real pleasant presentation either. But I think at this point in time, with the information we have in our, in the determination by the hearing officer, with the most recent inspections, and certainly, I think, just the, the history, which has been, you know, pretty, pretty checkered, to say the least, and that may be being generous, over a number of years here, that I think the opportunities may be presented here for this or new owners to take a look at, you know, disuse and the condition of the structures on the property, and, you know, the physical improvements that would have to be made and the cost of those. All of those need to be taken into consideration. But I, I see no ability at this point in time and no reason why we should do anything but sustain the hearing officer's decision. We've taken into account the testimony here today. And so with that, I would move the staff recommendation, which is to deny the appeal and to, it would be, I guess, to revoke the business license and deny the renewal of the general business license for this property.
Second.
Supervisor Natale, would you like to add in the additional condition that Ms. Palms Mays had recommended, which was that we need to add an additional finding that as of June 18th, today's date, appellant remains in violation of Condition K, maintaining operable telephones in all guest rooms, and Condition M, maintaining the premises and guest rooms in compliance with county code enforcement and building requirements. So that would be added as an additional finding if the board so chooses.
Sure. I would add it in, and I think that, to the point being made here, that obviously, this has the attention of many different county departments, but that in the event that either the current owner and/or a new owner would, you know, express interest in re-inhabiting the property, that we make sure that we, you know, have all the proper checks and balances in place, Krista, to assure that this owner, any new owner, before that property would be reoccupied under this decision, that they'd have to make the necessary improvements. I heard that stated, but I think that needs to be enforceable. I don't know, anything we do here today make it any more enforceable, but I think that's very important. But I would add what you stated.
A second motion with those additions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you, Board.
Thanks.
We're on to county executive comments.
No comments.
It comes from the Board?
I do. I do. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to ask the county executive to look into a ban or something close to it on flavored non-cigarette tobacco products. Recently, the Sacramento City Council had an ordinance that addressed this issue, and I think it was a good move, maybe not strict enough, but in addition to being a health hazard for youth and adults, it's, from an enforcement standpoint, when something gets banned in the city of Sacramento, it, the, it moves into the unincorporated county. So I'd like to avoid that and, but mostly keep youth from getting involved in a substance that leads them into cigarette use as they get older.
Good. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Nope. We're adjourned.